Evening, everyone. The time is 6:04 PM. It is Tuesday, June the first, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order. Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
Here.
Ellison? Flores-Cale?
Present.
Oh, excuse me. Flores-Cale?
Here.
Rizzo? Bradshaw?
Present.
Tobias?
Present.
All right, all members present, we have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments. Next up, executive session, Councilor Flores-Cale.
Pursuant to Chapter 551, the Texas Government Code, the City Council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The City Council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics: pending or contemplated litigation, or to seek the advice of city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071, Kyle Park Ambassador Proposal Force Mayor Claims, Local Government Corporation, Texasly High Ordinance Number 493 Utility Billing, and then, okay, Project Pacific Blue, Project Goldfish, Project Indigo.
No action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned, and now we're going to wait and roll the tapes over and start our regular meeting. It is 6:04 PM. It is Tuesday, June 1st, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
Here.
Ellison?
Present.
Flores-Cale?
Here.
Rizzo?
Here.
Rizzo?
Here. Say here. There we go.
Bradshaw?
Present.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, seven members present, we have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to please do so. We ask that you direct your comments to the mayor and council, that you limit those comments to three minutes, and that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have, looks like, three registered to speak so far. First up, Sergeant Tracy Verona.
It'll come, it'll come, I'm sure. Give it a second. Kyle Police Department Traffic Division wanted to give you a brief update on our clicker ticket enforcement period. You remember, we were up here recently asked for your approval to join in participation with TechStot as they host the clicker ticket annually to, well, to try to find those who aren't wearing their seat belts, really enforcement to ultimately, there it is, keep drivers safe, reduce, hopefully eliminate those seriously injured or killed in crashes by wearing their seat belts. So this enforcement period is to run from May 24th to June 6th. So we're halfway into it, midpoint. Just want to give you a quick update. We have 154 stops, 123 citations, and 72 warnings. We've been pretty lenient with those citations, explaining to motorists, our reason for being out there is not to write citations, but to make sure everyone is the best part wearing their seat belts. The state gives a number of approximately 90% of motorists who are wearing their seat belts. This has been an enforcement program they've had for a number of years now, and for the most part, most motors do wear their citation, I'm sorry, wear their seat belts to get citations, and that's in line with what we're seeing, is most of the motors we're stopping are wearing them, or at least by the time we walk up to it before we can determine if they're not. So while being out there, we've been able to slow down quite a few drivers, we're trying to hammer our interstate enforcement zones, primarily on interstate, we have some side streets, but primarily out there, and trying to get the message out that we are enforcing these laws. We've been able to take a few reckless drivers off the roadway, including a DWI just the other night, who was so intoxicated, they were having problems staying within their own lane, and with the length of time they still had to drive, they would likely got into a crash on the way home, so we're in the right place and right time, making some positive efforts there. Yeah, with that brief update, we'll give you final numbers when we're done, just to let you know where we're at. Want to thank you and your support for letting us move forward with that. We'll probably have some more. Ultimately, we want to keep the citizens of Kyle and those passing through here safe all together.
All right, thanks, Sarge.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Sydney Estrada.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Cindy Estrada. I want to voice my support for Item 24, amending Chapter 23 to add unlawful activities in public areas, and give thanks for the draft ordinance being presented tonight to make our stance known as a community. We cannot stand idly by and wait to become a rebound city for another town's blunders and then deal with the unrest for another avalanche effects of poor policymaking, as has been seen in the city of Austin, Los Angeles, Seattle, et cetera, and also be allowed to do the same here, as we saw it took little to no time to ruin a city, not only on its facia, but also with its unrest, sense of security, embarrassment of headlines, and increase in crime, and loss of pride of what was once touted as the beautiful downtown Austin, where you used to want to visit when your friends and family came to visit. I grew up in southeast Austin, and I'm very proud that I no longer live there. Fortunately, my mom still lives there and is very frustrated with the conditions, as we now have homeless individuals that walk along Slaughter Lane, 1327, et cetera, so they're making the rounds. I have unfortunately experienced harassment while in my car alone, as well as an individual, causing fear to my three children as we were returning from Airport Boulevard from Austin, to only feel helpless knowing that a call to Austin Police Department would really get you no help. I asked them to please go talk to that individual, and hopefully another family wouldn't endure the same issue there. They were harassing my teen daughter in the back, knowing we couldn't get out and do anything. I don't want our folks to endure the same here. Let's keep Kyle humble, smart, proud of its economic growth that we are experiencing and embarking on now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Tracy Shield.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, tonight I speak to you as the president of the Waterley Falls HOA. Several months ago, our communications person, you are Samantha, came to the HOA board asking about taking away our letter changeable signs to digital sign, where he could change it from his home. These are currently marquees at our entrances to inform our residents of meeting dates, recycle versus compost day, and other events such as dumpster day, pool openings, national night out, and other events in the neighborhood. While we also send out email blasts, have it on our website and Facebook pages, people still sometimes need it in their face, or they just don't go looking for it, and they say, "I wasn't told," or "I didn't know." So the marquees have been helpful, but they take time to change out, and we need a volunteer to do so, which at this time, you're looking at the volunteer, which means, eh, really hasn't been done. So, when our vendor looked into this for us, he saw that the city of Kyle has an ordinance against these types of signs in single-family developments. After speaking with Howard and looking at the ordinance, he stated that we would most likely get a denial from the building board with these ordinances as stated. So I am before you, asking you to look at the ordinance in order to change it to allow LED digital signs on common ground for an HOA to keep their residents informed, instead of having to take the time to change out letters on a sign every month. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Tracy. That's all the comments that I have. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments. It is now closed. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for city council meeting and regular meeting for May 18th, 2021.
Second. It's been motion by Councilor Tobias, seconded by Mayor Protem Coach, that we approve the minutes for May 18th, special and regular. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, presentation regarding the ongoing update to the city of Kyle transportation master plan. Mr. Leon Barba.
Good evening, mayor and council. Leon Barba, city engineer. Mayor and council, if you recall, we did approve a contract with CPNY Incorporated to update our transportation master plan, and that final report is due at the end of September, but in the meantime, we wanted to provide you an interim update and let you know where we are and what we've been doing on that particular study. We'd also like to get input from council on that as well. Before we start, though, I would like to recognize Hannah Chetwood. She's an intern that we had helping us with this particular study. She's graduated now, so she's working in our NPA, but that's our first engineering intern that we've had, and we've had very good success with her, so thank you, Hannah. I would like to introduce John Dean. He is with CPNY, and he will be giving you the presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and update you on our work on the transportation master plan. So to get started, some of the things that are driving this update, and I don't have to tell you folks, the growth here in the area is faster than I think anybody anticipated. I actually saw an email that I got today that I think officially that the census just said that the city of Kyle is over 60,000 already, which is incredible. It's really incredible. The current transportation plan isn't accounting for that type of growth, that kind of rapid growth, and so it's not meeting the needs of the growth of the community, and frankly, the development is outstripping the ability of the transportation plan to keep up. And so one of the things that you're here and hear me talk about is kind of that fourth item is about corridor preservation, and I'll talk about that in more depth here in a little bit. And then, you know, as Leon stated in his introduction for me, is one of the things that are really the big point of this presentation to you guys this evening, is to get some input from you all about what your thoughts are, what your feelings are, what are your friction points with the transportation system currently, and just kind of elicit conversation from the council at this point, so we can make sure and include those conversation points in the final version of the plan in September. Some of the things that we're doing, we're evaluating the proposed roadways as they relate to known and expected development. I'll show you a map here in a second where there's a tremendous amount of growth, there's infill growth incurring in the city proper, but there's a tremendous amount of growth I don't have to tell you all, to the east and west of the city that is, you know, there's a lot of vacant land and a lot of growth is occurring there that's putting a lot of pressure on the system. We want to make sure the plan accommodates future growth. Adjacent jurisdictions, a lot of the work that we've done is gathered information from adjacent jurisdictions about what their roadway network plans are, and to make sure that what the city of Kyle is doing fits in with that, those plans, or vice versa. Another point that I'll, one of the things that we're going to have as a result of this is kind of some recommendations going forward, some things that we think that you need to look at. One of them, I think, that you'll hear us talk about is cross-sections. You have a tremendous number of cross-sections in your current plan, to the point where it's really difficult to tell one road, the difference of one road from another. In other words, a collector versus an arterial, there are some that are four lanes divided, and they're both, one's designated as a collector, one's an arterial, but from a user standpoint, it's hard to identify which one is which. And then finally, and this is kind of the most relevant point, I think, for me, is the north-south and east-west connectivity. As you look at the current transportation system, it doesn't provide continuity in terms of connecting you across the city and through the city, and I'll show you a map and kind of illustrate that a little bit better. What is our plan? Collecting relevant data, we've met with city staff several times, prepare some preliminary recommendations, which we'll talk through, you know, some of those preliminary things we're talking about today, meeting with you, the city council, to get that input from you folks as well. Then we'll come back with draft recommendations and present those to the city council. We think, our schedule says September, but we think, I haven't told Leon this yet, that we think that we'll probably be there by August, so I might not have tied myself to that. Then we want to refine the recommendations, you know, and then present those to the council by September and be done, but again, I think we'll beat that date. What have we done so far? And Leon mentioned, or Hannah Chetwood's been fantastic, she helped us collect a lot of data as it relates to the update to the plan, a lot of the information that we're using to make these analyses. It includes existing and planned development, we worked with your planning department to get some of that information, Campo plans and data, information from neighboring jurisdictions, transportation plans, that type of stuff, existing, the existing transportation master plan and amendments that you have to it currently, demographic data, and that's a kind of a moving target because it's going so fast, and then roadway cross-sections are typical sections for adjacent community, for Kyle and for the adjacent communities. We spoke to city staff extensively and evaluated, and we're looking at that information as we prepare this presentation and talk, we'll go through the things that we're recommending. So this is a map just showing the existing land use and plan development. You can see the stuff with the cross-hatches, and I don't know if I can, I don't have a mouse here. The cross-hatching, for example, the Nance Track, for example, you see the cross-hatching, that indicates that it's proposed development, and you can see there's a tremendous amount of proposed development to the west and east of the city, and then within the city proper, there are some infill areas that it looks like that there's planned development occurring there that's going to infill some of those vacant tracks that still exist. So this is Kyle's currently proposed roadway network, this is the current transportation plan as it exists right now, and one of the things I'll point out to you is that the east-west connectivity at I-35 serves as a pretty significant impediment when you go in east and west and across the city and then north-south, there's a lot of disconnected roadways is the way that I describe them. An example might be Go-4th, where Go-4th goes up and hits BB, and then you have to take a ride on BB and then go north again on Go-4th. It's because of the conservation reservoir there, but that's some of the disconnected stuff that I'm talking about. And as you think about this, I want to really encourage you to think about this not in terms of today and not tomorrow, but in 10 years and in 20 years, when you have 120,000 people here, or 200,000 people here, because it is imperative that you identify and start to preserve the right-of-way now, because what can happen on these corridors is when developers encumber the right-of-way to a point where you can't widen the road, it effectively prohibits you from widening the road because it becomes cost prohibitive to take building after building after building to do it. So that's kind of a recurring theme I've been talking quite extensively with city staff about. So this next map, this is something we're recommending, and you can see that there's a lot of roads that we've updated in terms of shifted them from collectors to arterial type roadways, and so on that map, and I'll show you this map, and we'll be able to talk about it however long you'd like to. The red indicates a four-lane divided or a five-lane arterial, and the blue is a six-lane arterial, and you can see it's a significant change from that to this. And again, that's looking towards 120, 150, 200,000 people, not the population you have today. And another important point is, is that, for example, if we said, you know, FM-150, maybe that's not fair because it's TechStot, but say, for example, we said that that's going to need to be a six-lane road, that doesn't mean it needs to be a six-lane road tomorrow. It means that ultimately, you need to plan on that size of a facility there to handle the type of growth that you're experiencing. So it doesn't mean it needs to be built tomorrow, that's not what I'm saying, it's just we're trying to push you in the direction of preserving right-of-way. Here's some of the roads, and again, we'll talk about some of these. Kyle Loop, you know, the change from the current plan to the preliminary recommendation, so from a four-lane arterial to a six-lane arterial, same thing with FM-150, and you can go down the list and see, I won't bore you by reading those out. And I just want to point out that as I've really dug into the stuff that Kyle's got going on, you're in a unique position. The growth here is phenomenal, and I did a little research, y'all are just on the heels of San Marcos. There are only 70,000 people. I mean, you're right there, and I think that, you know, as you build this plan out, one of the things that, you know, when I was initially talking with Leon about this, he said, "We want to make sure that our cross-sections marry up with what Butte is proposing," or you learned, or whatever they're doing, and it kind of struck me that it's, they need to marry up with what y'all are doing, because y'all are the leaders here. Y'all are the ones that are going forward, and I just want to emphasize that, that y'all are the ones that are setting the standard, and I just want to make sure and emphasize that point. So that concludes my presentation. I'm sure you don't have any questions for me.
Just timing for actual adoption.
Yes, sir.
What's your thoughts on that?
Of this, I think, we got a long summer in front of us. I think, depending on the comments, y'all might have, you know, comments like, hey, tear this thing in half and start over, and so that might change things, but the way that we're going now, I think that probably in August, we'll be at a point where we can, we'll pretty well have put a bow on this thing, I believe.
I noticed that on Bunton and BB, those roads are both straight, but on Bunton, we had had a discussion about possibly redesigning out there over some of those low-water crossings. I know you're aware of that.
Yes, sir.
So can you talk us through why you're staying focused on the straight?
So. So on Bunton in particular, we actually spoke, I was actually on the call that they, where the TERS, they're talking about putting the TERS there in the pit, and I've spoken to the developer, and they are right, it currently goes down the middle of the creek, and that's not desirable. And because the TERS is coming in and willing to finance some of that road, it makes sense to take and shift the alignment so that you can get it now. If the city was going to build this thing 100% on your dime, I think that you can kind of discount some of that stuff. The way that the alignment is shown there, it serves the purpose of getting you that east-west connectivity. One of the things that Bunton is so important is that it's one of the few connections that you can hit an overpass and go across I-35. You don't have a whole lot of those, and so that's a significant one. We worked with the developer and talked about, you know, what alignment would help them, and they actually told us that that would actually benefit them, that kind of diagonal crossing of that track there that D.R. Horton's looking at, it serves the purpose, so we think that we still achieve the connectivity that we need. And frankly, one of the things about this map is that right now, there are lines on a page, and once we get into the fine detail, that's where the road needs to shift from here to there, or whatever the case is. The primary point is, is that there needs to be a connection, we think, for Bunton all the way out, and if it goes along Cotton Gin, or if it takes its own alignment and it's, you know, has to put some kind of a structure to get out of the water, or whatever the case is, we think that connection's important.
Noted. Any questions? Comments? All right, next up, Tracy Shield.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, tonight I speak to you as the president of the Waterley Falls HOA. Several months ago, our communications person, you are Samantha, came to the HOA board asking about taking away our letter changeable signs to digital sign, where he could change it from his home. These are currently marquees at our entrances to inform our residents of meeting dates, recycle versus compost day, and other events such as dumpster day, pool openings, national night out, and other events in the neighborhood. While we also send out email blasts, have it on our website and Facebook pages, people still sometimes need it in their face, or they just don't go looking for it, and they say, "I wasn't told," or "I didn't know." So the marquees have been helpful, but they take time to change out, and we need a volunteer to do so, which at this time, you're looking at the volunteer, which means, eh, it really hasn't been done. So, when our vendor looked into this for us, he saw that the city of Kyle has an ordinance against these types of signs in single-family developments. After speaking with Howard and looking at the ordinance, he stated that we would most likely get a denial from the building board with these ordinances as stated. So I am before you, asking you to look at the ordinance in order to change it to allow LED digital signs on common ground for an HOA to keep their residents informed, instead of having to take the time to change out letters on a sign every month. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Tracy. That's all the comments that I have. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments. It is now closed. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for city council meeting and regular meeting for May 18th, 2021.
Second. It's been motion by Councilor Tobias, seconded by Mayor Protem Coach, that we approve the minutes for May 18th, special and regular. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, presentation regarding the ongoing update to the city of Kyle transportation master plan. Mr. Leon Barba.
Good evening, mayor and council. Leon Barba, city engineer. Mayor and council, if you recall, we did approve a contract with CPNY Incorporated to update our transportation master plan, and that final report is due at the end of September, but in the meantime, we wanted to provide you an interim update and let you know where we are and what we've been doing on that particular study. We'd also like to get input from council on that as well. Before we start, though, I would like to recognize Hannah Chetwood. She's an intern that we had helping us with this particular study. She's graduated now, so she's working in our NPA, but that's our first engineering intern that we've had, and we've had very good success with her, so thank you, Hannah. I would like to introduce John Dean. He is with CPNY, and he will be giving you the presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and update you on our work on the transportation master plan. So to get started, some of the things that are driving this update, and I don't have to tell you folks, the growth here in the area is faster than I think anybody anticipated. I actually saw an email that I got today that I think officially that the census just said that the city of Kyle is over 60,000 already, which is incredible. It's really incredible. The current transportation plan isn't accounting for that type of growth, that kind of rapid growth, and so it's not meeting the needs of the growth of the community, and frankly, the development is outstripping the ability of the transportation plan to keep up. And so one of the things that you're here and hear me talk about is kind of that fourth item, is about corridor preservation, and I'll talk about that in even more depth here in a little bit. And then, you know, as Leon stated in his introduction for me, is one of the things that are really the big point of this presentation to you guys this evening, is to get some input from you all about what your thoughts are, what your feelings are, what are your friction points with the transportation system currently, and just kind of elicit conversation from the council at this point, so we can make sure and include those conversation points in the final version of the plan in September. Some of the things that we're doing, we're evaluating the proposed roadways as they relate to known and expected development. I'll show you a map here in a second where there's a tremendous amount of growth, there's infill growth incurring in the city proper, but there's a tremendous amount of growth I don't have to tell you all, to the east and west of the city that is, you know, there's a lot of vacant land and a lot of growth is occurring there that's putting a lot of pressure on the system. We want to make sure the plan accommodates future growth. Adjacent jurisdictions, a lot of the work that we've done is gathered information from adjacent jurisdictions about what their roadway network plans are, and to make sure that what the city of Kyle is doing fits in with that, those plans, or vice versa. Another point that I'll, one of the things that we're going to have as a result of this is kind of some recommendations going forward, some things that we think that you need to look at. One of them, I think, that you'll hear us talk about is cross-sections. You have a tremendous number of cross-sections in your current plan, to the point where it's really difficult to tell one road, the difference of one road from another. In other words, a collector versus an arterial, there are some that are four lanes divided, and they're both, one's designated as a collector, one's an arterial, but from a user standpoint, it's hard to identify which one is which. And then finally, and this is kind of the most relevant point, I think, for me, is the north-south and east-west connectivity. As you look at the current transportation system, it doesn't provide continuity in terms of connecting you across the city and through the city, and I'll show you a map and kind of illustrate that a little bit better. What is our plan? Collecting relevant data, we've met with city staff several times, prepare some preliminary recommendations, which we'll talk through, you know, some of those preliminary things we're talking about today, meeting with you, the city council, to get that input from you folks as well. Then we'll come back with draft recommendations and present those to the city council. We think, our schedule says September, but we think, I haven't told Leon this yet, that we think that we'll probably be there by August, so I might not have tied myself to that. Then we want to refine the recommendations, you know, and then present those to the council by September and be done, but again, I think we'll beat that date. What have we done so far? And Leon mentioned, or Hannah Chetwood's been fantastic, she helped us collect a lot of data as it relates to the update to the plan, a lot of the information that we're using to make these analyses. It includes existing and planned development, we worked with your planning department to get some of that information, Campo plans and data, information from neighboring jurisdictions, transportation plans, that type of stuff, existing, the existing transportation master plan and amendments that you have to it currently, demographic data, and that's a kind of a moving target because it's going so fast, and then roadway cross-sections are typical sections for Kyle and for the adjacent communities. We spoke to city staff extensively and evaluated, and we're looking at that information as we prepare this presentation and talk, we'll go through the things that we're recommending. So this is a map just showing the existing land use and planned development, and you can see the stuff with the cross-hatches, and I don't know if I can, I don't have a mouse here. The cross-hatching, for example, the Nance Track, for example, you see the cross-hatching, that indicates that it's proposed development, and you can see there's a tremendous amount of proposed development to the west and east of the city, and then within the city proper, there are some infill areas that it looks like that there's planned development occurring there that's going to infill some of those vacant tracks that still exist. So this is Kyle's currently proposed roadway network, this is the current transportation The other thing I'll add is, this really goes hand-in-hand with the open house that we just had on the trails. Transportation is much more broad than just roads. It's sidewalks and trails, multimodal connections, et cetera. So our goal is to marry a trails plan into the Transportation Master Plan as we move forward, and that'll also help us seek additional funding. And then finally, just a correction, that the census numbers are less than 60,000.
Did I get it wrong?
It's over 50, though, and our in-house projections have us eclipsing that 60,000 mark in January of next year, 2022.
One last question for Scott. So Scott, we talked about 150. Does that align with the future 150 project the county's working on?
Yeah, so what you're referring to is the western bypass, the 150 bypass, and it will align with the 110 bypass, or 110 loop from San Marcos.
And the county will be a partner on that?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there are no objections, I'm going to move the city manager's report to the top. That was a request from staff. All right, next up, city manager's report.
Okay, just waiting for the screen to change. There we go. Thank you, so city manager's report. So those who were able to join us yesterday were, I think, all to a person very, very pleased at the turnout and the quality of the groundbreaking we had for Heroes Memorial Park. We estimate somewhere around 400, I think, is the number we're hitting at now. Lot of great support and great speeches, the flyover, and I know we have a video that we want to show recapping the event. So without further ado, Grant, if you want to throw that video up.
We believe that the City of Kyle deserves first-class parks. We believe that the City of Kyle deserves a monument to honoring our veterans and our first responders, and that's why we're all here today. And so thank you all for coming. It starts with inspiration. You can't build a park unless you are inspired, and the council that I was elected into was inspired, and the council that took that historic vote was inspired, and the council that sits here today remains inspired. But we are not the only ones. There are many groups here, our veterans groups, the Kyle VFW, AmVets, the Kyle Police Department, and other community members have worked very hard over the last several years to create this moment that we are all experiencing together. And so just to everyone who has worked on this, so many more than can be counted, thank you. Thank you for bringing this vision for Kyle, for our veterans, for our heroes, for our first responders into reality. Thank you for that.
Today, the members of Kyle VFW Post 12058 are honored to be part of this groundbreaking ceremony of the Heroes Memorial Park, which will help us remember and honor all the unsung heroes of our nation, especially those from our community, who made the ultimate sacrifice for their country, their community, their family, and their friends.
To the families of our veterans, first responders, and other community heroes, thank you for your sacrifice and service to our country and community. I'd also like to thank and recognize Rick Frauman, Ray Bryant, and the entire TDS family, and especially our TDS drivers, who take such great care of managing services to the City of Kyle community. We appreciate our partners at the City of Kyle, who share our conviction for always working to build a better legacy. The Heroes Memorial Park is a legacy project that TDS is proud to be a part of.
The veterans want to thank the citizens of Kyle, the city council, and all the employees that have worked diligently and are continuing to work to make all of this a reality. For that, we are unwavering grateful.
As the grandson of a World War II vet and the son of a Vietnam vet, this day carries a lot of weight for me. Thank you for the sacrifice and the love our veterans have for our country and this community. Thank you for the sacrifice put in through this process, and thank you for what you bring to Team Kyle.
Fighting soldiers from the sky, fearless men who jump and die, men who mean just what they say, the brave men of the Green Beret. Silver wings upon their chest, these are men, America's best. 100 men will test today, but only three win the Green Beret.
Very good.
Wow, that was put together in a day. That was impressive.
That was very good.
Nice work. Grant, good job. That's inspiring. I feel like we should have ended with that video. So everything else I say is just kind of anticlimactic, but COVID-19 testing. There you go, it's on the screen. Second dose for our mass vaccination event is June 13 at Lehman High School from 8:00 to 1:00. For those that just need the single shot, the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is also available. The budget calendar moving forward, you'll see here on the screen what's coming up. Again, counsel, don't forget June 26 as the next work session. Here now, we're on July 31 as work session three, so make sure that's also in your calendar. Trails Open House, I just mentioned that. That was from 4:00 to 6:00 here just a little earlier. Big kudos to everyone that came and has helped draft the maps, the plan. Sean Bergen-Polk is here, who helped us with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant for the Spring Branch section. Great Springs Project was here helping, and then quite a few staff and other community members. So thank you all for everything you've done to help us get our trails network to where it is today. National Trail Day is June 5. It's coming up this weekend, so please come out and enjoy the existing Kyle Trails. Speaking of June 5, our citywide cleanup event is also that day from 8:00 to 11:30 at Greg Clark Park. See the items that we'll accept there in citycyle.com/cleanup. Youth Fishing Clinic in Derby, second Saturday of the month at Lake Kyle, and that is June 5 as well. Busy day. Market Days will be the following weekend, June 12, from 9:00 till 12:00, and that's at Greg Clark Park. Movies at the lake, so we'd like to get the community out to enjoy the little amphitheater out there, June 11 at Lake Kyle. Please come, bring your family, bring a blanket and your chairs, and enjoy the movies with us, Sonic the Hedgehog, that movie on the 11th. Our library is again sponsoring the Food for Fines Drive, so the next couple of weeks through the 12th, if you bring a non-perishable food donation, you will be, you'll receive a $2 credit toward any accrued library fines. Click it or ticket, we just heard from Sergeant Verona on that item. Team Kyle is hiring, so police applications through June 10, civil service exam on the 12th, lifeguards are needed for the Kyle Pool, and we have a whole bunch of other job openings on our City of website, or City of Kyle website, or the URL jointeamkyle.com. No shortage of positions. Dialogue for Peace and Progress will be having another one here Friday, June 18, from 7:00 till 8:30 p.m. at City Hall, and we will also livestream that event. More information at citycyle.com/dialog. And then we have, we were asked to find a time that worked for the Joint Parks and P&amp;Z Commission meeting with the city council. We found a good slot in January, so go ahead and pencil that in, January 25. We'll get the word out to those, that board and the commission, and make a good day of And finally, the number that we received from Campo this week for the census number, January 1 of 2020, was 51,588. Matches closely to our in-house numbers, which we track through actual building permits. Why that is important is, that was obviously almost two years ago now, and we feel, based on our permit numbers, that our current population is 58,500. So we are growing at about 9% per year, and January 1 of 2022, we expect to be at 60,200 population. So we're currently working with Texton to move those signs and update our numbers. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or a council can share any comments, feedback.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions or comments?
58? How did we come to the 58 with the permits correct? The permitting that we've brought out is how we get from 51 to 58?
Yeah, so.
Well, the 51 was January 1, 2020. So that was, you know, 16 months ago.
Months ago, so now we're at 58, and it's a long way from that small town. I grew up at 7,000 residents. So yeah, definitely a change. It's great. Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
I have some. Yesterday's event was fantastic, and I want to thank everybody on city staff that was out there helping. Samantha, your team, Grant, everybody that was out there. They were very friendly. They were talking to all the residents. They came up, they greeted them, and that's what made me feel so good about our Team Kyle, is how we interact with our residents in inviting them. And I just wanted to say a big thank you for all those who attended. It was remarkable and very heartfelt and heartwarming, especially for my family that was out there. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who was involved with setting up the tents, the chairs, the sound system. Mariano was out there, everybody, your whole team, thank you. Thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for being out there and presenting that.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, councilmember.
As we're giving out thanks, I just want to say that that event was very well put together, and thanks here on her team as well, because that event just went flawless. It was great, and everybody that was out there enjoyed it, so definitely thank you to everybody.
And Victoria from Economic Development helping us on the fly through the program. That was great. It was just all, I just want to second everything that the councilmember said before. It was an all-out team effort from Team Kyle and the community involvement, the Boy Scout Troops, to the various veteran organizations, first responders. You could see the pride in the community yesterday, and I think it was shared and expressed through all of us. And I remember just all of yesterday, I had a big smile on my face based on that event, and those kind of things, bringing the community together. And then kind of the first time us kind of having something like that after this pandemic year, just something special about it all the way around. And so I just want to thank all of staff that was a part of it, all of the community groups that were a part of it to make that kind of thing happen.
Definitely think Dex really hit it. All the differing community parts, aspects that came together to show up there, I'd be remiss to forget to mention my brother Knights that were out there. Knights Columbus came out in a pretty good number, and I wanted to thank them, because I invited them about a month ago, and they said they'd be there, and they showed up. So I want to say thank you.
Anyone else? All right. All right, next up, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Mr. Barba.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I'm Robert S. G. J. H. 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 in part of a sewer line that we've called Center Street Village Line. But item seven is actually a contract with K. Friesen Associates. The original intent was to bore underneath Hull Street. We've gotten approval from Tech Start to open, cut the road, so we'll, we'll have to revise our plans, should hopefully get a little bit of cut and pay on that contract. So that's the reason for number seven is to go ahead and revise the plans. Number nine is this authorizes the city manager entered an agreement with that developer for them to build that section of line. And number 10 is the approval of that contract with the low bidder, which is allowed in construction to build a project. On item number eight, that's additional work that we're going to need to do to complete the acquisition of the North Trails wastewater project. We need to go ahead and acquire a 50-foot tract of property for our trail, future trail there. And we also need to make some modifications to the design based on some comments we got from the Plum Creek Conservation District, so we had to modify our design a little bit. And that's all I had. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Barba? Councilor Rizzo.
Yeah, Leon, I'm thinking it's going to be probably about mid-June when this rain lets up, so all our projects throughout the city are probably going to be delayed. But one of the delays I'm looking at is the landscaping at the Cessna Ranch Roundabout. That's due because of the shortage of foliage, or what is that for the landscaping?
I'm not sure what's delaying that project, council member. I'd have to ask the developer, but it seems like they could start on that anytime, but you also got summer coming up, so they may be why they're trying to delay. I'll, I'll find out.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Leon.
I will find out.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments? Motions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items five through 14.
Wait, I have a question.
You have one? You can get it, there's a motion on the floor. You can get it right after the second. Second. It's been moved by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Mayor Protem Coach, so we approve the consent agenda items presented. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Flores-Kale?
Yes, just for number, item, item 11 and 12, just so we're clear and on the same page on who approved this and when, so people are not coming to Councilmember Tobias's house to blame him for the roundabout. I just would like to know who approved, or I guess, I guess who passed and when it was passed, the inspections.
Typically, the developer will ask the Public Works Department to set up an inspection on the project, so usually somebody from the engineering section and Public Works will go visit the site. The inspectors keep an eye on that during, during the construction, and they already have, initially what they do is a pre-inspection walkthrough, so they give, give the developer an idea of, look, you're not going to make it here. This needs to be done. This needs to be fixed. And once the developer gets that pre-inspection done, then they set up that final walkthrough. And then at the final walkthrough, when there's, if there's things that are identified, before we put this on the council's agenda, we make sure that we get those punch lists straightened up and taken care of. And once those are taken care of, he submitted his bond, he submitted his construction plans or as-built, and then I've got all the paperwork that I need, then we put it on the council's agenda. But that goes through the inspection process.
Okay, but we don't know who approved it, like, and when it was passed inspection?
Public Works, yes. They've approved it.
Passed them, okay. I'd like to see that information, like, in backup material, just so I can call in case there was any concerns or, just accountability reasons, if it's possible. So if I could have Public Works send that to me? This is not going to hold me back. I would just like to see it for verification.
This file, this file, not the approved.
Correct.
Right. The final walkthrough is probably what you'd like to see.
Yes.
And sometimes it's just very minor. There's buttons need to be placed with the fire hydrants, so they need to clean out some inlets. There's some cracks that they need to fix, things like that. So that's what they usually look at.
Okay, and that's, like, I don't need to know what needed to be done. I just would like to know who approves it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll take care of that.
Any other questions, comments? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. We're going to postpone Agenda Item First 15 until a little later in the meeting. That's by request of Paige until she gets back in here. 16 as well. All right, let's go to item 17, second reading and ordinance amending Chapter 53 of the City of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 12.9 acres of land from agriculture to mixed-use development for property located at the northeast corner of Philomena Drive and Button Creek Road. Mr. Coons.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. On the request of the applicant earlier this evening, they sought a postponement of this item to the June 15, 2021 council meeting, which is your next regular voting meeting, and staff would appreciate if you would accept that request.
Any objections to waiting on this item?
No.
I don't have any objections, but can I make a request? I've written both Paige and Scott and Will regarding the clarity of the deeds, so if we can get, if I could get those emails responded to or explained, I would appreciate that before I vote on it next.
Okay.
If I could get a copy of those, too, as well, please. Sure.
Thank you. I don't know that anyone that has the ability to respond heard you, so just, you probably need to make the request afterwards as FYI, so. All right, if there are no objections, we'll bring this back at the next meeting. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number, you want us to take action on?
Do you have to vote?
On the zoning?
I think.
All right, make a motion to postpone this item to the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
It's been by Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Flores-Kale. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six, six to zero. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number 18, second reading and ordinance amending Chapter 53 zoning of the City of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of rezoning approximately 1.63 acres of land from construction manufacturing to retail services for property located at 1050 Button Creek Road. Second reading, Mr. Coons.
Yes, sir. Second reading from the earlier item that was voted six to one in favor by this board at the last voting meeting, so there's been no changes. I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Coons or comments? Councilor Ellison.
Motion to approve Agenda Item 18 is written.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Ellison, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approve Agenda Item Number 18. Any discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five to one. Next up, Agenda Item Number 19, second reading and ordinance amending Chapter 53 zoning of the City of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of modifying Section 53 and 893 conditional use permit required in Hayes County, Texas. Mr. Coons.
Second reading of the text amendment to the trigger for when conditional use approval is required of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the changes, aesthetic changes to structures in any of our overlay districts.
What was the discussion at the last one? Were we?
The discussions, well, the, the discussion that staff had for you was that it used to be or, and now it's and, so they have to meet both sides.
And we just, the vote was just to approve as?
That's correct, that, as per the revised text that was presented tonight in your, in your packet, as written by the Planning and Zoning, as they amended it at their meeting, at their voting meeting.
Okay. Any discussion on the, this item or motions?
Motion to approve item 19.
Okay.
All right, it's moved by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Councilor Ellison, that we approve Agenda Item Number 19. Is there any discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. Next up, Agenda Item Number 20, authorize. What about Pervaz? Pervaz, are you available? Y'all want to jump to the budget amendments?
Yes.
They're having some kind of powwow. All right, let's, let's skip to Agenda Item Number 22. First reading, approve and ordinance amending the city's approved budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021 by increasing the total appropriations for expenditures in the general fund by 8.375 million and to provide 4.5 million in additional funding for the Uptown Central Park and Heroes' Memorial Projects, 3.5 million for 2021 road bond program, 375,000 for Christmas tree and lights and decorate a historic water tower in downtown Kyle. Mr. Pervaz Mohit.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, for the record, I'm Pervaz Mohit, City's Director of Finance. The item before you for your consideration and approval is Budget Amendment Number One for Fiscal Year 21 for the city's general fund. This budget amendment has four funding or appropriation items totaling 8,375,000 as follows. 4,500,000 to provide additional funding to complete the design and construction-related costs for the Central Park, Cultural Trails, and Heroes Memorial Park projects. Second, 3,500,000 to retain the services of specialized engineering firms and consultants for the road projects planned for the 2021 general obligation road bond program. Third, 200,000 for the purchase and installation of festive lighting, large lighted Christmas decorations, fabricated arches and frames with lights, power supply, switches, timers, and controllers to provide a trail of festive lighting on Center Street and City Square Park in downtown Kyle. And finally, $175,000 for the purchase and installation of lights, power source, power source and supply, switches, timers, controllers for year-round lighting display on the historic downtown water tower to celebrate special events in the Kyle community. With that, Mayor, I'll be glad to answer any questions council may have.
All right, thank you, Pervaz. Any questions or comments?
I have questions, please.
Councilor Tobias.
All right. It looks like we have four items altogether on one agenda item. Is there a reason why we have all, all of them together versus separate line items? And on that end?
Yes, sir. This is just a budget amendment. We're not awarding contracts.
Okay. And the other one was the Christmas lights, so before anybody calls me Mr. Grinch. 200,000 for the purchase of installation of Christmas lights, decorations, fabricated arches, electric wiring, power supply, center of downtown trail of lights. Question is, is the money has already been budgeted through some other funds, and who will be directly in charge of any of the installations?
This, this program will be managed by the Parks Department.
Okay.
Mariana Espianasa is our director.
So, okay, so it's not going to be contracted out by anybody? We're not in that, so it's going to be in-house?
Some portions of this will be contracted or outsourced, especially the, the purchase of electrical equipment and installation.
And the other one is 175,000 for the purchase of the Christmas lights and decorations. I've already got calls from some of my constituents already of why the amount is so high and where did the dollar amount come from? Is it the Christmas lights that expensive now, or is it just the, the groundwork for something that'll be used for later on? Because I can understand that, you know, we want to have the downtown Christmas lights and have a nice presentation, but I'm just getting the feedback to you guys from what I'm hearing on my end as far as what are we going to do the rest of the year with, with all these? Is it just a one-time 375,000 for lights, or is it just going to be something for the groundwork for years to come for these Christmas festivities?
It will be, the $200,000 item is for every year from that point forward, that we would be utilizing these lights and, and any equipment that we buy. For the water tower project, that's going to be year-round used for different occasions and events in Kyle. For example, if you start in January of the calendar year, we could have New Year's, Free New Year's celebration, we could have Martin Luther King Day celebrations, we could have Easter, Independence Day, all the way to Halloween, Thanksgiving, and Christmas.
Okay, so this?
And the day that Longhorns win.
There you go. And when the Cowboys win the Super Bowl.
I'm sorry, sir.
And when the Cowboys win our Super Bowl, but I'm not going to knock on wood on that. Okay, so it's going to be like a year-round thing. It's just not going to be just for the holiday season. It will be used for different events throughout the year.
Yes, sir.
Breast cancer awareness pink and autism awareness month blue and so forth, things like that.
Anything that council would direct the Parks and Recreation Department to light up the tower for.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments?
Pervaz, this is the Councilmember Rizzo, for the record, that's a really good price for the lighting of the tower. I know Round Rock spent about 700, what is it, about?
700,000.
$300,000 to light up there, so I've got a really good price on that, so I want to commend you on that. That's a great price. One of the things that I think that this light, the lighting of the downtown will do for our city as well is bring a sense of pride. I'm really excited to see us investing in our historic downtown. I hate to see it, a lot, some historic downtowns get forgotten as growth comes in, and I'm glad that we're not doing that. We're actually investing in it, trying to promote growth into our historic downtown, and I commend you on doing it at a pretty good price comparing to what Round Rock spent, so.
And I believe, Councilmember, our Parks Department is going to build on this initial investment for both the City Square Park as well as the iconic tower.
I'm glad that we're going to light it up for different things because they're waiting for a Longhorn win. We might leave it dark forever, so we're going to do it for something else. Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments?
I have a question.
Councilwoman Flores-Kale.
So it's 375 for Christmas trail of lights and decorations, historic water tower. Do we have a breakdown, like, how much is going to go to one versus?
200, $200,000 for the downtown, Center Street, and City Square Park, and 175,000 investment towards the lighting of the water tower.
Can you tell me where the money is coming from?
General fund ending balance.
Okay, so do we know what department, or it's just overall?
No, it's, we are, council, if, if council approves this item, you're basically appropriating 8,375,000 of unprogrammed but available funds in the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Motions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 22.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilor Rizzo, that we approve Agenda Item Number 22. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Councilor Ellison.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to take these items separately and vote on them each individually.
Okay, well, that was, was that a motion to amend the motion?
Motion, certainly I can do it that way. Motion to amend the motion to approve in totality and break these up into individual votes.
All right, it, there's a motion, a second on the floor, to amend the original motion to include the, or to vote on these items separately, so that vote will take now and we'll also have discussion. So is there any discussion on that motion to amend? Okay, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, sorry, that was a little janky, maybe we should roll call that. You don't want to roll call that?
This is a, a vote to accept the motion to break these into individual votes.
Yeah, so amendment, amended motion passes, so the original motive is, motion's restated now, so we can take them separately, I guess. Would be, is that the correct way? I'm not sure if I did that right at all, so that's a weird amendment, so. All right, so which one do we want to do first? First will be 4.5 million for the additional funding for the Uptown Central Park and Heroes' Memorial Park. Do we want to have discussion on each one? I guess we will because it's a discussion on each one. So first up, any discussion on the four and a half million for funding for Uptown Central Park and Heroes' Memorial Parks?
Is this money that's already been allotted from the budget, like you said?
This money is available in the general fund, but it's not identified for any specific project.
Okay.
So I'll just state that the 4.5 million here for Central Park, Cultural Trails, and Heroes Memorial Park, this is an increase on top of the original allocated amount that we had for those three projects. Just a public reminder that these are funds that will be reimbursed through revenues of the Terres District. So that sits a lot better with me on this particular item. We, we've done a number of different, oh, sorry, I thought I lost the signal. But no, I, I'll just stop on that one then. Therefore, that's why I'm in, in favor of this, this agenda item.
All right, any further discussion on the 4.5 million? All right, so there's already, if we're taking them separately, then there's a motion to approve on each one already, because I think the way that it's set up, so we don't have to re-motion, we'll just start calling, calling rolls. So for the 4.5, I'll call, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. The next will be 3.5 million to retain the consulting services for engineering of the 2021 bond roads. Is there a discussion on that item?
So, this is for consulting?
Consulting and engineering, yeah.
Okay. Did we do, did we do, like, how was it? How'd that work? How'd we come up with this number?
This is our initial estimate to get a master project manager and four firms to begin the preliminary engineering and survey work and geotech work. and four firms to begin the preliminary engineering and survey work and geotech work to lead us up to the bond election propositions.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just kind of jump in and piggyback on what Pervaz said there, as well as the services for educational materials and perhaps a public relations firm to educate the public about the bond, that, that's all included in this as well. Correct, Pervaz?
That's correct, sir.
Yeah, and so the idea behind this also for public education purposes is that obviously the council is looking at road infrastructure and improving that in various different areas. We've identified four major roadways in Kyle that we'd like to address as well. And basically, we're forecasting a bond for the voters to decide on going ahead, going ahead with reconstruction improvement of those roads. This 3.5 million will do everything to get us up into that point. Similar approach that we took with the Public Safety Center and getting the engineering and design and other necessary items that a lot of folks don't realize before dirt even turns, what needs to happen on those things before. And so we're kind of taking a little bit of an aggressive step here, which is unlike what the previous road bond of seven or eight years ago, where all of this was done after the voter approval process. So we are a bit trying to get as much prepared for the voters to have as much educational purposes and what we'll be doing if the bond is approved to go ahead and move forward with that. I will be frank and add the caveat that this is, this is a large investment upfront that hopefully the voters will see this investment as a wise one and, and, and move forward with that because this would, if the, if the vote fails, then this is 3.5 million dollars that we've invested to shelve essentially.
Just to add to that, you know, one of the things that the voters could, we're just sure of is that they're not going to wait seven or eight years before a road gets built. This will, these roads will, if, if the bond passes, will be built in a timely manner, and they'll get to see it in real time. So that's, that's why I'm glad we're taking this approach, an aggressive approach this way. We have a need as we grow as a city. We're trying to be proactive instead of reactive, and I think this is the right step to move forward with, going forward with the road bond. And this way, if we wait too long after a bond's passed, material goes up, labor goes up, and we're having to allocate more funds. This way, we've taken an approach that will actually save the taxpayers in the long run.
Agree with that. Any other discussion? All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. Next up, 200,000 for the purchase and installation of Christmas lights, decorations, et cetera. Comments?
I have a comment. I really like the idea of the lights. I don't know if I like the water tower.
That's the next one.
Oh, those, okay, because it's 375.
Right, this is 200.
For combined, okay, so, okay.
We're voting on the 200 now and then 175 next. Anybody have comments on the Christmas lights part? All those in favor say aye.
So I have some comments.
Gosh, okay, go ahead.
Wait.
This is late, you gotta jump in. There's like a cadence.
You also got to give a moment for people to finish speaking, and I'm trying to be considerate of others to finish their thoughts. So this one's challenging for me, this one and the next one, I'll admit. So I've been on council now in my fourth year. We've only done, to my knowledge and staff, please correct me, one budget amendment in that timeframe. I believe it was for a special election to replace a council member that resigned after a November election. And we held an election, I believe, in February or January. So now we're, now we're proposing for, for and one, one agenda item. So this is, this is quite a uncharted territory here. Like I said, I, I stand by the 4.5 largely because that is reimbursable with TERS funds. Stand by the 3.5 because road infrastructure is vastly important in this city, and I agree with the, this effort as council member Rizzo also pointed out earlier on that. The Christmas decorations are, are, are a struggle because I am supportive of continuing to bolster our Christmas light displays downtown. That one month of magic in Christmas lights, it, it brings a lot of joy to a lot of our residents here in Kyle. And certainly would be excited about that. My question is, you know, we are in a budget, in our budget season right now, and this could certainly be allocated in this current budget to be made available on October 1st, the beginning of our fiscal year. What was the thought process behind doing the budget amendment as opposed to putting it in this budget to be allocated on October 1st in the upcoming budget year?
So that we can do the lights this year instead of next year? That's the thinking?
That's the only, the only thinking? That there is nothing else besides just trying to do it this year as opposed to obviously next year? And how much more did we allocate in this budget, the current fiscal year, from the previous fiscal year that we spent on Christmas lights the year prior?
The current budget, the current approved budget has $20,000 in the Parks and Recreation Department for Christmas lighting.
And that's, that's for the 2020-21 fiscal year, correct?
That's correct.
What was the 2019-2020 fiscal year allocation?
We had $65,000 for the Christmas tree, and I believe there was another 15,000 or 20,000 in addition to that.
I see. So we've kind of had a roll-in, 15,000 to 20,000, it sounds like, Pervaz? We added the additional for the large one-time purchase of the tree that hopefully we'll have for two decades or more. And certainly, I, I understood you were saying earlier that, that, well, correct me if I'm wrong because I may have misunderstood you earlier. $200,000 for the Christmas lights and decorations for downtown along Center Street. This would be a one-time purchase. This would not be a roll-in cost for each year we're committing to $200,000 each budget year?
This budget amendment is a one-time expenditure. However, that, there might be some proposal from the Parks Director in the proposed budget. I'm not sure yet.
And have we, certainly understand that. And have, would this include and what are our plans on storage of this equipment? Do we have a long-term, long-term storage allocated and taken care of? What are the thought process on that?
We have the Parks Director available online, so I'm going to ask Mariana to step up and maybe answer some of those questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. This does include the addition of two additional storage containers.
And do we have a cost breakdown from these estimates, both on the 200,000 and 175,000? Do we have the invoice or, or quote, rather?
We do have quotes. They include decorating the old City Hall, decorating the largest historic tree, all the tree wrappings, decorating the gazebo, the fountain and the flower bed on the fountain, the bell tower, the purchase of at least seven more large displays at a, at a discounted rate, all the decoration for Center Street that Pervaz mentioned, and then the addition of any electrical needs in two large storage containers.
And forgive me if I missed it. Did we have that in our backup material?
No, sir.
Pervaz?
The backup material includes the ordinance.
There is, there is cost for the Central Park Heroes and the Memorial Park, but there's just not for the Christmas lights or the water.
These were preliminary estimates based on what we've gotten from other cities, other vendors. So we do not have the final, final quote yet until we knew this was going to be approved. That's when we're going to get bids.
Okay.
So is there not a way to get a stronger look at those costs before that? Because I feel like, and certainly, not to be a cynic here, but if, if Round Rock or other cities paid much more than what we're estimating at 175,000, I'd like to see why and how we were able to get that. And as far as, I don't want to see as that changed or an added amount added to that because of, you know, a preliminary estimate that was just far off. So personally, I guess, council, I'll just say this. As far as the last two items, I'd like to have some more information about those because this is, this is a pretty large ask for a budget amendment. I certainly have things that I think the council should amend the budget to do this year as well, including a comprehensive plan, which I think is a document that is created by input of citizens, and I think that is highly important. I think that would be right on par with a budget, budget amendment as well. But if we are willing to wait on that as a council, I'm not seeing much of the, the strong difference here. But I would like to see more information and more, more breakdown on the cost of these, these two items personally before I was more comfortable with making a budget amendment.
Okay, we have several other council members trying to, that are queuing me here, so I'm going to go to Councilor Bradshaw next.
I would just like to say that the past two years, the Parks Department has done an amazing job with the square. It has been so incredible to see so many families out there, people taking professional pictures and just creating those memories. So to me, these last two items are an easy yes because you really just can't put a price tag on, on quality of life, on creating memories and family traditions.
Okay, Councilor Rizzo.
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that, you know, one of the things that a lot of the cities have done, that you get a lot of big draws, look at John City, look at Fredericksburg. I, I know that when they first started investing in their lights, they probably got that knee-jerk reaction going, how much are we investing in lights? And the commerce that came in with it outweighed the initial cost of those lights. And I, I guess that's the way I'm looking at, is revitalizing our downtown, our historic downtown, bringing that conference in and, and, and making it an equitable investment and revitalizing a part of the town that some people feel is getting forgotten. But we're not forgetting this part of the town. We're actually investing in it. As far as a water tower, the reason Round Rock paid so much for theirs is because they had messaging put on it. They can write messages on it. We're not looking to go to that extreme. We're looking at, you know, lighting it up is what we're doing. Different colors, not putting messaging up and down the water tower. And really, I don't think anybody would want to see messaging up and down our historic water tower here. But the lighting, I think they would welcome. But this is just about us investing back into our community, the part of the community that many feel like we're neglecting, and I want to assure them that we're doing that. The other thing is giving people a sense of pride. After everything we've gone through in the last year, giving, that we're now coming out of this pandemic, giving them a place to come out and congregate and celebrate and enjoy life again is probably key for me. And that's why I, I probably support this greatly. Thank you, Perez.
Councilor Tobias?
Okay, just to kind of go back again and, and to reflect what Councilor Ellison's stating is, this is 375,000 in lights. And if we are going to invest in that, personally, I would like to see what these decorations would be, would look like, the lights, maybe the contractor or the, the brand we're going to use so that way I could feel comfortable as far as this is the lighting and this is the, the product, the end product of what we are making this large vote on, this, this dollar amount. Again, as far as, as far as the money, budgets come from other funds. I didn't know was this going to be coming through from hotel tax or anything like that, or sales tax. But my whole thing is that if we had an idea of the breakdown of what each light would be, this is, this is what we're buying. We're buying this fixture, and it's going to look like this. It's going to be this large, and this is the investment we're making. Same thing with the lights. How, how long are the, how far is the display going to be? Is it just in the square? Is it going to be all the way up, all the way down Center Street? Those kind of things that I would like to see to feel more comfortable if we were to invest this much money into these type of displays. I'd like to see what, what we're actually going to be seeing when the lighting turns on.
Councilmember, real, real briefly, the Parks Director has a few examples in slides. I hope Mariana can share her screen that will show you the types of lighting that she's proposing. And I believe she also has one or two quotes that she's already received that she might be able to share with us tonight. Mariana, are you still there?
If I can, I can share my, let me pull it up real quick.
If you would please go through your slides where you have examples of the lights.
So our proposed breakdown, as you guys were asking for, we do, we have obtained several, several quotes. And we have identified several different large displays that we would like to purchase. So the large displays would be an estimated total of 97, 680, and that's before 1% discount. And a little bit of the breakdown, as you can see. So we do have actual photos of the proposed decoration, which I will bring up. We have a walk-through glitter box, and I can make them bigger as they come up quickly. A walk-through bow, a gift box, a huge giant snowman, or snowman and a Santa Claus, and a star that would complement the tree that we already have.
I'm sorry, I can barely see it. It's not on the screen. The monitor's ours.
Okay. Can y'all see them now?
Yes, there we go, thank you.
So the walk-through ornament, the snowman, Santa Claus, the ribbon bow, the rock-through gift box, the star, and then the 3D gift box. So of those seven pieces, that'd be about 91,000. And then the rest of the funds would go towards decorating the remainder of Center Street with new lighting around the light poles, new wreaths for City Hall, the arches that would look somewhat similar to the ones on this screen here down on below. So wherever there's a star, that's just a proposed decoration, including the water tower. And there's just an example of the street there. But unfortunately, I cannot make these any bigger since I'm sharing my screen.
We can see it now, it's fine.
We, we can see them when they're on our screen.
And that is the proposed plant and the proposed pieces that would complement the tree for the brand-new reconstructed City Square Park.
May I suggest next time we start with that? That makes it easy, it makes it a little bit easier for us to know what we're going to be voting on. And, and those pictures were great, and they brought back memories of last year. And so that makes me really excited. Although I still have some reservations on 175,000 on a water tower. I do like, I like the downtown lights. I like, okay, sorry, 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 sorry.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a fair point because what, what I would say is, you know, I, you can think, wow, that's a whole lot, or depending on what event you put this 200,000 up against, it looks like a steal. So for example, the Fourth of July, we spend $45,000 in 19 minutes. This is $200,000 over 28 days, also buying materials and lights that we will use year after year after year. So again, just like with the Christmas tree, it's a, you know, it's, depending on how you look at it, it's much more affordable than some of our other events or, for example, our budget for Pie in the Sky, which is significant. It's a three-day event. It's a three-day event. And, and probably our, our downtown square this year is gonna be pretty well attended. Maybe more, maybe the most attended. If you think of it like an event, it's probably the most attended event we have in the city this, this coming year over the course of those days. And then the other thought was because we're, you know, preparing to try to enter into a contract with, to, to do construction on Mary Kyle Hartson and have that done in time. This was something that I think that, you know, we've been trying to get to a certain level. We have a certain standard we're trying to hit for those lights. And so, you know, it's not in the budget yet because we weren't, I guess, I'm, I'm not sure why we never got, we didn't have this discussion last budget year, but we do have the funds available to do it. And it's, seemed like it would be a waste to, to, to not move forward and get all the, the stuff that we've been aiming for, for a long time this year, when, when we know we're gonna have a brand-new park to put all those displays on. So those are, those are all the kind of comments I have. Mayor Protem.
This is a real easy vote for me. I really like the way that the Parks Department is approaching this. I like the fact that we're buying these decorations outright. We need to have decorations. Over the past two years, we have tasked the Parks Department with creating a beautiful lighting display in our Central Park down there, in our Mary Hartson, Hartson Kyle Park. If you paid attention, the decorations changed from last year and the year before because we were trying to find decorations to use because we don't own our, a lot of our own decorations. So we're borrowing decorations. The hard part about borrowing decorations for Christmas is the people who own those Christmas decorations want to use them during Christmas. So we saw a lot of our displays change. We're not renting these decorations, which is the most expensive way to do it. We are buying them and storing them. I think that this is a smart way for us to go about the decorations, and this is the one time where they're trying to buy a bunch of decorations at once, and then we will slowly add to those decorations over the years. So for a month worth of event where families can come every night as they so choose and enjoy that with family and friends and takes pictures, this is a no-brainer for me. I'm very happy, Mariana, that you are putting this together, and you have my support to create the most memorable holiday event that Kyle has seen this year and then moving forward.
I think we've got it talked through. Any other discussion points?
Was that Councilmember Ellison? I'm not sure. I heard.
Yes.
Councilperson.
Yes. Couple of points. Certainly, understand the Quality of Life Initiative, not against that. We certainly do that all the time. We budget those things. The Pie in the Sky Festival, all the other things that were mentioned, we budget in budget season, and they go forward on October 1st. Other point I want to make is that the tree, the 65,000 for the tree, correct me if I'm wrong, Perez, that was taken from the park dedication funds, correct? That was not a general fund item.
That's correct.
So is there any way that, so here's my, my compromise. Is there any way to get that 375,000 instead of from the general fund that we allocate that from park dedication funds?
If you vote yes tonight, I'll find it.
Certainly. So I just want to say that, that's, I just want council to understand. Those are big differences, and I get it. And I can, I, you can hear how things are going already, but I just want to make it clear that everything that we've spoken about, I agree with and I support. And, and there's those past initiatives as well, but we've all gone through a budget process for those. And there are many, many things that happen throughout a budget process to really inform and educate not only ourselves, but the public about what is being allocated and funding. So those, that's, that's a, that's a big, that's a big thing. Second big thing is, once again, the Christmas tree, and I know a lot of folks felt some type of way about that, but that was paid for by park dedication fees, which are paid for by the development community. So not ad valorem property taxes collected for that, whereas general fund items are through that manner. So if we could find a way and if council would be amenable to shifting this allocation of funding from park dedication funds as opposed to ad valorem general fund dollars, that would be an easier pill for me to swallow personally on a budget.
Mayor and council, if you so desire to amend your motion to identify items three and four for the Christmas decorations to be funded from the Park Development Fund, and we can bring that back on second reading.
It's, it's a mean old to me. So if that's, if that's what it takes to, you know, certainly a cleaner line there. Is there any Parkland projects that would be jeopardized from that? I know that fund's fairly well off right now, so, as is our general fund. Okay. You want to make a, a motion on that, Councilperson Ellison?
Certainly.
Amendment, a motion to amend?
Motion to amend that, well, I guess I, we're only on the 200,000. So motion to amend that the 200,000 allocation come from the park dedication fund instead of the general fund.
Second.
All right, there's a motion to amend made by Councilperson Ellison, seconded by Councilperson Rizzo, that 200,000 for the Christmas lights and decorations would be taken from the Parkland Development Fund as opposed to the general fund. Any motions or any comments on the motion to amend? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Any further discussion on this item before we vote on it? This is just the 200. We'll do the tree next. Just FYI.
I just want to say, I think you all did a really good job negotiating and coming to the middle, so that's always nice to see. So thank you to Mr. Ellison, who was willing to make that little change so we can all get something that I think the residents are gonna love.
And we can say the developers paid for it.
As long as those Christmas lights go in this year. Where's TF Harper? Where's Mariana? We have a very ambitious goal for the square for this year, and I want to see that executed. So that's, to me, that's what this vote is all about.
As long as we're investing in downtown, right? I mean, however you want to split it.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, you want a motion to amend this one too? Someone go and get that clear, Councilperson Ellison?
Motion to amend. Has there already been a motion on this one? I thought we took them separately.
We're taking, we just voted on 200,000. Now we're voting on the 175, but we need to amend it so that it's taken out of the Parkland Development Fund.
Right, because the original language is for the general fund. Got it. Motion to amend the item to allocate the 175, 175,000 from the park dedication fund instead of the general fund.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Ellison, seconded by Councilperson Tobias, that we amend the motion on the 175 to be taken from the Parkland Development Fund as opposed to the general fund. Is there any discussion on that motion? Councilperson Rizzo.
I just wanted to share why, when I brought forward lighting up the tower about a year ago, why it was so important to me. Growing up as a kid, people used to say, be careful when you go to Kyle because if you blink, you'll miss it. It's definitely what they used to say. We're such a small, little, insomniac town, you know, didn't mean nothing to nobody. We're just a small country town out here, but that water tower always meant something to us growing up. Every time we saw the water tower coming to town, we were in Kyle. We were home. That tower being so close to I-35, lit up, will draw people to this historic part of town that's being forgotten slowly. But we're, we're now investing in it. We're bringing some product to the downtown area that's gonna be there for the families to come out and enjoy. But to draw them here, you gotta have a draw. Lighting up that water tower is gonna be that draw. People are gonna want to come and take pictures by that water tower, lit up, the historic water tower that reminds you that you're home. And I look forward to seeing that water tower lit up. Thank you.
Any other discussions on the motion? We're still on the motion to amend, correct?
I don't know. Yes.
All right, so we're gonna take the vote.
Yeah, we haven't voted on the motion.
Yeah, we'll vote on the amendment, then we'll keep going. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, so we're still on the 175 now. Any further discussion on the lights, the lighting of the tower?
So I, I have to say, this one's just, once again, a reach too far for me. I, I think adding to it is great. I think we, we did that last year. We're obviously just made a vote to add 200,000 to it. For me, I could hold off on the 175, budget it this year and get it. That's the addition for 2022 personally. I think incremental steps would be prudent here. I think the, I have to be honest with you, even the 200,000 was, was a, a strength for me, but I appreciate the, the amendment to get it from park dedication funds. That's, that's a huge win in my book. I think for us as elected officials, if I'm be honest with you, that was a, that was a huge sticking point with the tree. And so this one is just a little bit too far of a reach for me. I, I would like to see it done in a regular budget and then allocated in fiscal year '21, '22 to be the addition in 2022 year. Personally, I also just like the water tower, the iconic water tower, how it is without anything added to it. I personally think it's great how it is. But so that, that's, I just wanted to provide an explanation on why I'll be voting no on.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I've kind of got to agree. I think the 175 can definitely be onto next year's budget. And I'm totally on board. I think everybody knows with Mr. Ellison regarding the comprehensive plan. So I'm more than willing to go with the Christmas lights, but the water tower, I mean, the Christmas lights are time sensitive. I don't know if the water tower is, and I feel like it can be budgeted later.
Any other discussions? Councilmember Rizzo.
Just, well, it could be budgeted later. Unfortunately, what we saw this past year is prices double in material, and it's not gonna slow down. It's only gonna get worse. If we continue to kick a can down the road, we're not gonna be able to afford it. So we've got to decide whether we want to draw into our historic downtown or not because if you see the cost of building material right now, I mean, there's memes out there that says, I've got a truckload of 2x4s. Will somebody trade me a car for it? I mean, it, it's really ridiculous out there, but the prices, I mean, it's real. I mean, the prices are through the roof, and they're not gonna slow down. It's only gonna get worse. So if we kick the can down the road, probably not gonna happen.
Mayor Protem.
I'm in support of it. It's just another beautification issue to me. It's a downtown beautification measure. I think it's, it's worthy. It's the water tower. It's basically Kyle's identity, you know? That's what everybody points to. That's what you see everywhere when someone thinks of Kyle and puts a picture of Kyle on the wall. It's that water tower. So dressing it up, making it more interactive, making people smile with it, it's, it's a smart thing to do. And yes, costs are going up. We can always defer. It's here in front of us now. It's, it's got a yes vote for me.
Does anybody know how much wood is used to light up the tower? Is that something we should really worry about? Just out of curiosity. Like, I don't know if LED lights are that extinct and that, like, affected by COVID that we cannot wait until the budget time. Because if it's important now, it'll be important then. And I, you have my support on it. If it's on the budget, I'm willing to do it. But if we're gonna make that amendment, then I think, it just needs to hold off. We have, I think we have other things that we can focus on with 175,000 extra dollars.
Well, I just got to remind you that Round Rock paid 700,000. I don't want to pay 700,000. And I'm good at 175,000. We wait another year, we're probably looking at it jumping maybe 50,000. I mean, it's just gonna continue to skyrocket. Prices in all material are rising. Material, lighting, electrical, heating, anything that you go out there to go, there's people waiting on homes right now that the prices ballooned on them because of the building material. So it's, it's getting crazy.
I agree. I've seen it. Seen houses be put on hold, but not because of lights. And if you can see the water tower from 35, you're probably not gonna get a real good picture with it when you're sitting right next to it. So again, if, I don't think it's gonna be, it's not 175 dollars important enough to amend a budget when it can, it can wait and we can do it the right way. I've talked to several people, and if it's not like right away, a yes, a confident yes, I feel like we can always bring this back and, and think about it and move on it later. There's no reason to have to rush this.
I have a question.
I'll just.
Oh, sorry. I have a question for Mariana or for whoever, I guess. Do we, do we have a sense of what this is gonna look like? Like how they're gonna be constructing the lights and my concern is just that I, I haven't seen what the plans are for it. And sometimes we're hit or miss on some of these kinds of projects, and they don't end up looking the way we imagine. So I just, I don't know.
As far as the wa-
Yeah, go ahead.
As far as the water tower, we do not have a written plan. It's just pretty much at this point been discussion of what could be at the water tower.
So you would bring, you'd bring back the actual contract with some renderings and some detailed descriptions?
Yes, 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 sir.
And the expectation is that they would bid on this in time to have it ready for when? When would it be? By Christmas or would it be?
Before Santa's arrival on Wednesday, December 1st.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just step in and say real quick that I, I would like to see that as well. A little bit more information, just like we got on the park in your slide previously. I second what Councilmember Flores-Cale said about that, if you started with that. That, I, I think there's, needs to be more fleshed out on the, the tower part in particular. So that's one thing that really cautions me on, on voting for this. So I, I'd like to see a lot more. I'm still wary about, I mean, it's, we're exactly four, four months away from October 1st, which is when the new fiscal year starts, with it being June 1st. And, you know, I, I understand quality of life and, and investing in, in this area. I've supported a lot of different initiatives. We're, we're putting all the pipeline money in the downtown area to redo the park and create that building and landscaping. We're, we're, we've invested heavily each year into, and even more so just now, into the Christmas decorations. So I, I don't feel in any way that this council, or just speaking for myself, have not invested heavily in this area in, in improvement. I think the 200,000 that we're gonna do, and I'm much happier that it's coming from park dedication funds, is gonna be a game changer. It will be a draw. I, I, I just would caution the council about looping it all in right now when in four months, we could, we could have that, those funds allocated in this, this, these budget work sessions and have that as the, the, you know, if the council still sees fit, to be the grand unveiling in 2022. And so, so on, on top of the point that the mayor just made about seeing a little bit more about what this would look like, getting a, getting a better idea of where these costs will go and not just kind of a spitball, forgive my term, but quote, where we don't really have a substantial understanding of what it will look like, where these allocations will go. I'd like to see that before I made a vote. And then, like I said, it's, we're, we're four months from a new fiscal year starting. We could allocate this in this, this current budget season and have it ready to go for next year. On top of all the investments that we of a council have made very heavy-handedly into the area, once again, all the pipeline money we got from that settlement and additional investments into that, into this area down here. I, I don't, I don't see how anybody can make a strong argument that we, we aren't making a conscious effort to invest heavily in, in the downtown square and area down here.
Also, can I see, I'd like to see a quote. I mean, I've heard 700,000 from Georgetown. So my fear is if we're saying, oh, Round Rock, sorry. So my fear is if we're saying 175, and it's significantly more, and we already say yes to this, are we gonna have to come back and vote again for additional money?
Yeah, also look at the maintenance costs through the, out the year as well, what it's gonna take to keep that up and running throughout the whole year. I understand this is just for installation for the lights itself, but what about the maintenance cost on it?
What, what maintenance would, would you occur with LED lighting?
Well, there's things that do happen in, in a sense, and who would, who are we gonna contract that out? It's gonna be, of course, probably in-house. But again, it's, it's something that, I'm always the person that's about timing. Yes, the Christmas. Yes, the Christmas lights, of course, but the lighting of a tower right now, it's, you know, it's, it's still one hundred and seventy-five thousand, and I know there's a lot of things in this city that we could still be using that money for. But to me, right now, it's just uh, if, I agree with Ellison, if we can somehow work it through the budget and, and allocate it for the following year, that could be a new item that we can add for the following year as far as the new downtown feature. Uh, but I'm just n- not comfortable with, with this right now.
You know, we're, we're investing two hundred thousand into lighting downtown. You've got to have a draw. You've got to have something that's going to bring them in from I thirty-five. You've, you've got to, you can't come to Kyle and bleak and miss it, because the historic part of downtown still light that. People go to the HEB, they go to the Lowe's, they see that from I thirty-five. We've got nothing that draws them. What we've got coming into town right now is you come in from one side and you've got a flea market. Coming from another side and you've got a prison. What draws them to the historic part of downtown? Nothing. I'm asking you to invest in the historic downtown, and you've invested heavily, but now you've got to draw them there. How are you going to draw them there? You have a beacon of light.
It's not a matter of not investing. It's not a matter of not investing, it's, it's just the timing of it. That's all it is, okay? It has nothing to do with, it's not a matter of that, or that, that we're not investing in our downtown. Of course we are. Of course we are.
I think Mr. Councilmember Rizzo had a really good question. He said, how much does it cost to maintain it? And the question is, do we even know that?
LED lighting is a one-time uh installation. Every once in a while, you'll have some go out, but very rarely, it's not like light bulbs. You don't have somebody coming in, changing light bulbs. It, it comes in, they install it, and it lasts.
What happens if it's cracked?
Well, you got, you'll have a warranty on it.
Okay, I mean, what happens if it's foggy? I mean, there's a million questions. I would like to see all those answers upfront, because-
I just see us investing heavily in our historic downtown and nothing to draw them in. And this light, the beacon of light will be the draw. I really do. I think we'll be falling short if we don't have it. But I'm, I'm in-
Nobody's saying we don't want it. They're just saying, let's not amend the budget in order to do that.
Wanted. I mean, I, I'm telling you that this is something that I'm passionate about in the city. And I understand, not everybody has a passion, not everybody else grew up in this town, but I'm saying that I don't want people blinking and missing it no more.
I, I don't, I don't remember anybody saying no, they said not right now. So it's not, one does not mean the other. Just because we don't want to vote for it right now doesn't mean that we don't want to vote for it in the way that we're supposed to during a budget season.
I feel a no coming on, and I'm okay with that. If, if your vote is no, go ahead and do it. I mean, that's fine. I mean, we're not here to be perfect and vote alike all the time. I'm just playing the case on why this light is so important, why it's so important to the historic part of downtown, what we need to make sure that it's not forgotten.
My vote would be not right now. Not so much a no, but not right now. No, we didn't wait it to be.
I certainly understand your passion about it, Councilmember Rizzo. Uh, I, I think there's multiple ways to get people to a, a, a certain place. Certainly, uh, it doesn't have to be a bright shiny beacon. We have an amazing communications department. We have all kinds of different things that we could utilize to bring people to our downtown. So I, I push back on the, the, the narrative that the, the water tower is the only way to do that. Um, I would also state that, um, you know, I, I understand the investment. I understand your passion. I, I'm, I'm certainly one that y'all know is passion, uh, to be passionate about things. So I, I get it. Uh, but you know, like I said, I, it's one of those things that uh, I, I've stated here publicly that I think it would be, you know, certainly, it, it's, it would be a draw. I don't think it's the one that I particularly personally like as a draw, but that's, I'm not voting based on what, what draws Dex in particular. Um, it, it is certainly a heavy investment with, with the vote we just took, uh, as well as many previous past votes that we've taken. And it is, it's a difference of, of four months from where we uh either we can allocate the funding on October first to be there. And yeah, certainly, I get it. It won't be there uh this year, which I understand, there, there may be various reasons for wanting to do it this year, but we're going to add a spectacular addition of two hundred thousand dollars more than we had last year to our downtown square, and people loved last year. So i- it's going to, it's going to blow people away. It's going to be magnificent. It's going to be something that this city's never seen and never done before, uh, even without the water tower. And, and certainly, I think uh we will not have no heart of a time getting people drawn to that area to check out the new toys and new dallys that we have in our downtown square. Um, so I, I understand it, and it's going to, it's, I, I think it's going to be great. I think that uh, um, it's just, just one of those things. I, I think this one, this one could personally wait and be allocated in this current fiscal, uh, the upcoming fiscal year.
Um, well, um, I think we've discussed it pretty well at this point, pretty evenly split. My, 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 I have a couple of challenges with this, to be frank. Uh, the, uh, I don't like that tower picture. I, I don't like it, because of the shadows and things. And so that's a, it's, I'm, I'm worried that it won't look good. I think if I could guarantee and knew that it was going to look good, I'd be ready to go. Um, but I've developed a lot of trust in our uh, Parks Department and, and uh to be able to make sure that the, that the tower would look good. I've also learned that if you're ready to move on something, um, you can, sometimes you can regret not making that move. Uh, and I know this is an amendment, and we'll have an opportunity to um, to actually vote on a contract uh, i- if such, if the amendment passes. So with that, I'll probably just call roll, roll call vote unless anybody else wants to say anything else. All right, roll call vote.
Bradshaw?
Aye.
Tobias?
Nay.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Flores Cale?
Nay.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Ellison?
Nay.
Coach?
Aye.
All right, motion passes uh four to three. This will come back for a second reading. Next up, agenda item, we need to go back to the top now. It took a while, so. Um, agenda item fifteen, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas amending um, uh, ordinance nine fifty-nine, which granted a transmission and distribution electric utility franchise to PEC. Um, this item has a public hearing page. Ms. Sines?
Mayor, Council, Paige Sines, City Attorney for the Record. This item relates to the development of the Uptown Development District. In that district, the um, lot lines in relation to where the building is located are fairly close, and this does not allow PEC to put its facilities in a private easement for PEC on the private property. Instead, the, their PEC's lines will have to be put in the right-of-way. They like to avoid putting their facilities in the right-of-way where possible and placing them in private property. Um, because if the city chooses to relocate those facilities, it's at PEC's expense. What this particular ordinance does is it amends the franchise agreement to provide that in an urban district where there is not room for PEC to put their lines in a private utility easement. Um, that those will be placed in the public right-of-way, and that if the lines need to be relocated at the city's request, that uh they will be relocated at the city's cost. Now, what, the thought process here, as far as the risk analysis on whether those lines would have to actually be moved in the future, is these streets are going to be uh finally set and built with buildings right close to the property line. And so the cost of having to move a street or um modify a street, that's, that is when facilities have to be moved, is when a street is either re- relocated or um realigned. And so when you have a downtown area like the Urban Development District um build out the way it is intended to, the likelihood of having to realign a street in that circumstance is low, because you would not only have the expense of moving the electric lines if you approve this franchise amendment, but you'd always also have the expense of moving buildings. So that's just something for the council to consider. In addition to that, if there's, if PEC needs to go into the street to modify their lines, then repair of the right-of-ways at the city's expense here as well. PEC tries to, again, put their facilities in, on private property to avoid those expenses of being under the right-of-way.
Okay, uh, this item has a public hearing. If there are no objections, I'm going to uh go ahead and open up the public hearing. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? All right, seeing that, I'm going to go and close the public hearing. It is now closed. Anybody have any questions or comments for Paige? You, you think this is a necessary and uh right uh amendment to make?
Well, PEC, it's difficult to get them to agree to go in the right-of-way. So these are the conditions under which they're agreeable to do so. And uh, the council has reviewed this once in the past and found it to be acceptable to proceed in this way. So we are bringing it forward for formal adoption.
All right, any uh, any further questions or comments? Motion to approve? It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Um, so it'll have to come back.
It will come back, yes.
Uh, next up, agenda item number sixteen, authorize the city manager to sign agreements with PEC uh to relocate overhead power lines uh around the premise of the downtown square to adjacent streets, alleys underground, and as necessary for beautification of downtown. Mr. Barba?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Leon Barba, City Engineer. Speaking of PEC, uh, our, we're making, having our efforts to move the power poles and, and all the infrastructure that's around the downtown square. In order to do that, PEC needs to be reimbursed for their preparing the plans and specifications to move those particular structures. And uh, this particular item uh authorizes the city manager to sign those agreements up to a hundred thousand dollars once they've decided how much they want to charge us.
Two for two. Man, wow. All right, um, a- any questions or comments to Leon there?
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item sixteen.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Flores Cale, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next up, agenda item number eighteen, second reading. An ordinance amending chapter fifty-three of the city of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of rezoning approximately one point six-three acres of land uh from construction manufacturing to retail services. Um, this was not unanimous last time. Is there anything to ask, add to this one?
Mayor, we already took a vote on this one.
Yeah, I thought we already did.
Somebody want to give me a number that we're on? We've been going back and forth and back and forth.
Twenty, we're on twenty.
All right.
I think the meeting's over.
Sorry, TF Harper. All right, next up, agenda item number twenty, authorize award and execution of a purchase order and construction contract with TF Harper and Associates for an amount not to exceed one uh million seven hundred ninety-eight thousand roughly for parks' construction and improvements to Mary Colheartson Park as per plans and specifications prepared by Coleman and Associates through the Byboard purchasing cooperative. Mr. Earp?
Mayor, Council, for the record, James Earp, Assistant City Manager. Tonight's the exciting night, where uh we may not be having a ribbon-cutting groundbreaking for the uh park in the traditional sense, because TF Harper is ready to get started working on the park tomorrow, um, if approved tonight. So, yeah, you can just take the shovel and, and, and reuse it. But uh, I know this council's had vision and very much uh has the desire to see the park completed or at least uh achieve substantial completion by uh November, so we can get it decorated with the beautiful lights that y'all just approved too uh for the Christmas season. So uh, we were able to add more time into the schedule by looking at utilizing uh the Byboard. TF Harper has done a number of projects in Kyle, has built a number of our parks, and has always delivered on time and at or under budget. So we feel very strongly about being able to, to partner with them. Uh, they showed extreme dedication, and in a very short time period, they were able to turn around a very competitive quote on delivering the, the project that we all are very excited to see come to fruition. So uh, there's a number of items that were, that were brought up for discussion uh on the contract, and those items are effectively that the uh delivery date of substantial completion would be November fifteenth, and TF Harper concurs with that, and Paige uh has, has that down. The substantial completion basically means um predominantly everything is completed, and we've done our walkthrough and our punch list, and it's able to be used. Uh, we do believe uh that we are anticipating a number of plants not being able to be planted until the springtime, primarily because of the time of the park needing to open for Christmas is not the ideal time to be planting new plants. The roots can't take uh root, and uh then they're susceptible to dying off in the winter season. So, so there will be a number of plantings that would be uh delayed until um to the end of April of twenty twenty-two. But beyond that, uh barring any uh force majeure, which we've had enough of the last year, uh or any other significant uh delays outside of TF Harper's uh hands, they are dedicated to delivering the project on time or sooner. Paige, if there's any other items that you wish for me to cover in my presentation, I'll, I'll defer the, the floor to you, otherwise.
Thousand for uh incentive per day ahead and a thousand as-
They've agreed to, to both sides. So if they're, if they're, if they're late on substantial completion beyond force majeure or things like that that are typically, you know, waived anyway, it's a thousand dollars a day. But if they deliver early, it's also a thousand dollars a day to their benefit, so. Um, and they're, they're acceptable to those terms. And uh, Mr. Harper is in the back here, although he doesn't, as he'll quickly tell you, own the business anymore. He's still very much involved. Uh, Ariel uh is probably on the phone. She said she'd be calling in, or she would be on Zoom. So she might be here remotely, and I can just, can't say how much I appreciate you, Ariel, uh, for getting uh this turned in in such a, a timely time for us to be able to make this meeting tonight and uh capture that additional time. Paige? It's a button, and you flip it.
That's tough. Okay, and uh, just a note on the liquidated damages. The critical date for completion is November-
Substantial completion, November fifteenth.
Yeah, so the liquidated damages clause applying to that provision is, is fairly critical. But for the later planting date, um, I just-
That would be the retainage.
Yeah, yeah. That would be the retainage would guarantee completion of that plantings by April thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. So, does that, am I making sense and explaining that well?
Yeah, that seems perfectly reasonable to me.
Okay.
To everyone else?
Be- because the plantings could be delivered significantly earlier than April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So the incentive payment applying to that date is-
Yeah, that doesn't make sense, yeah.
A lot.
It's, it's the November fifteenth date that-
That's where everything's tied to.
Correct.
It's just that we're holding back their contingency until they, until they finish the project with the plantings.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, the retainage, correct. And that portion of the, of the plants, you know, that they can't bill us for because they haven't bought them yet.
Right.
So would the plants be brought in after, like, a specific time, like in March or February?
Well, it really depends on what plants they can get and when. So they're hoping to have some of the plantings done. There'll be some things that we'll have to delay. So uh, you might imagine, there are certain plants that are available seasonally, and they're not available in that season to begin with. So they would be hopefully available in the spring. And then if not, then we can all, nobody, as far as I know, has said, I have to have this specific species of plant, you know? So I, I suspect that if we bump into a problem of either delivery of a plant or a particular species or what have you, then we can find substitutions with Ann through Coleman and Associates that everyone would be satisfied with. Because what we care about is that it looks nice and that it's functional, I, I would assume, so.
Yes, I guess we're continuously talking about revitalizing downtown. And I think when those plants do arrive at that time, it'll be perfect for spring, for Easter, Mother's Day type of celebrations if we open it up, the city opens up for those kind of events.
Absolutely.
Looking nice by then. Thank you.
Uh, we're, we're nothing if not committed to our schedules. That's what I've noticed about this council. And uh, I've noticed that we get real serious when we think our timelines aren't going to, aren't going to make it, so.
All in the timing.
Uh, I'm pretty happy to- I'm pretty happy to see this as a way for us to be committed to get this part done in the, in the timeframe that we intended. So budget amendment will come for this as well?
I don't know. That's a pervas question.
Just to go ahead and get it, because, just like H and P.
No, sir. To answer your question, we will include that funding in the proposed budget.
Okay. All right, that works. Motion to approve? It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale. Any discussion on the motion? What number is this, 20? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number 21, approve of professional services scope with Coleman and Associates of Austin, Texas for landscaping and outdoor space for 104 South Burleson.
Oh, yes. Mayor, Council, again, James Earp, Assistant City Manager, for the record. This is the professional services contract to take the landscape architect who was responsible for developing the Mary-Kylo Hartson Square and utilizing their services on the landscaping for 104 South Burleson. We had always intended, we did not bid out or award the design bid contract to Cadence and McShane to include the design of the landscape. We always intended for it to be the same company, so there would be consistency across, you know, the, the spectrum of, of the vision. So this amount should have been posted on the agenda, and it wasn't. So I apologize for that. But it's $37,700 is their professional services contract. And Ann is in contact with Cadence and McShane and ready to hit the ground running.
Question. It's only for the property boundary of 104 South, right? So there's no, the, the historic building, the, you know, the 1880s building or whatever it was, it's right there next to it.
No, anything that's not, that's not under our control is not in their scope. But it does include the bounds of the property that we can control. So if you want to extend it to include that, I mean, I'm sure Ann probably would, but we didn't ask for that because we don't control the land.
Well, okay. We would. I just, all right. Any further questions, comments on this particular item? We're dropping like flies here.
Well, Mayor, I'm happy to have her amended if that's, if that's the desire of council.
No, I don't, I don't think we can. It's, it's a shame because we should, we should be doing that. But, and we've made the pitch to try to work that out from a maintenance agreement. It's just falling on deaf ears.
Yeah, that's kind of the impression I got, too.
It's gonna stay the way it's been for 50 or 100 years over there.
Okay.
Anything else? Motion to approve? Did we already do that?
Second.
It's been motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we approve Agenda Item Number 21. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Next up, Agenda Item Number 23, approve a resolution expressing intent to finance expenditures to be incurred by the City of Kyle for the 2021 general obligation road bond program and to seek reimbursement of such expenditures. Pervas Mohit.
Mayor and Council, for the record, I'm Pervas Mohit, City's Director of Finance. The City of Kyle, this item before you is a reimbursement resolution for your consideration and approval. The City of Kyle is planning a 2021 general obligation bond election in November for the design and reconstruction of major roadways in Kyle. As we move forward, the city will be incurring expenditures in association with the road projects before the general obligation bonds are issued. The city intends to reimburse itself for these expenditures from the bond proceeds when the general obligation bonds are actually issued and sold. Tax-exempt bond regulations require us that the city council adopt a resolution to document the city's intent to reimburse itself for any costs incurred in association with the road projects from the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds to be issued at a future date. Staff is recommending adoption of this reimbursement resolution. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Pervas. Any questions? Motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution referencing the 2021 general obligation road bond program.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Next up, Agenda Item Number 24, first reading, an ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas relating, regulating certain offenses by amending Chapter 23 miscellaneous offenses. This is unlawful activities in public area. I'm not going to read it all out. This is camping and begging. Councilmember Flores Cale, this, we discussed this item at the last meeting. This is the ordinance coming forward. It's your item. You want to present?
I sure will. Thank you. So what we're trying to do with this is get an overall camping ordinance. Currently, you have to have a permit to, to camp in any spaces, non-private spaces, public spaces. And so I was trying to get that in order along with beggars. I don't even know what to call it. It's, you know, some people call it beggars. People, yeah, I say panhandler, but people get offended for that, too. So, and so what we're trying to do with this is just be a little, a little more proactive so we don't see any kind of outcomes that the surrounding areas have.
It's very similar to the ones that all the other cities in the area that do have it. It's pretty much kind of straight from there.
Correct.
Are there any differences between, like, San Marcos and Cedar Parks? I know they have one just about like this.
San Marcos is the one that I really appreciate. Theirs was really detailed and straightforward. So I, we pulled from, a lot from them. And then I also got a request from a resident. So I don't know if we want to talk about it right now, but I'll just say real quick. On Section 23.311, they wanted to add private property as well. If you are on their premises without permission of somebody with a private property, it would also be unlawful. So I don't know if I talked to Paige about adding that or not, or if it's permissible to add it.
Yeah, it says on private property unless the beggar or solicitor has permission from the owner or...
Okay, what number is that?
It's the top of page six.
Oddly enough, I've looked at this thing a million times. And so when she emailed me, I just wanted to make sure that they were covered. Okay, so as long as that's covered, that's the only email that I got requesting additional information.
So it'd be illegal for somebody to come and walk into Texas Pie Company and request without permission, I guess is the point.
You can set up camp anywhere, unless, I mean...
Well, this is the solicitor's part of it, to beg or solicit money or donations. But honestly, I, I don't know how that's not illegal already. I'm pretty sure it is. But good to have it codified. Because you're not allowed to go in private residence and solicit without permission.
That's weird. Because I've had, I get solicitors all the time.
Without a permit. So those are permits. That's different. That's a business, you know? But yeah, I hear your point. There's more no soliciting signs in Kyle than probably anywhere else in the MSA for that reason, too. So I'm supportive. It makes sense to me. Other cities have it as well. Any commentary? Councilor Tobias?
Yes, thank you. Again, thank you, Councilmember Flores Cale, for bringing this forward. This is a very important and controversial topic as well, as you know what's going on in other big cities, as the young lady here brought up, here that came up and spoke in Austin and other places in other states and California. So again, I'm going to kind of reflect what when we did the sex offender ordinance. This is not a punishment that we are trying to bring upon anybody, but basically a protection for our residents. Okay, a resident, a protection for the businesses, and also for our environment. As you know, we're investing a lot in our trails, in a lot of our parks. So we have to be very proactive in setting these standards to prohibit these kind of camping situations from individuals from taking advantage of that, and also the trash and litter, and just the protection of our, of our own. I have been approached before at some businesses here in Kyle, people trying to ask for money, ask for cigarettes. I'm glad in the ordinance, in the soliciting part, where it says that a person can't come up to you within three feet, I don't have it in front of me, but I was reading in detail, and that's great that we have those specific details placed in the ordinance. And going back to the solicitation, as far as the, in residents, one of the biggest complaints that I've heard in, especially in my neighborhood, is door-to-door sales. Now, a lot of times, these companies come in there and they're soliciting and trying to get business and so forth. Do, they have to have a permit, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Should these people that come to these doors be, have to show some form of identification that they're allowed to be there?
Well, and one thing, there, there are some exceptions. There's some protected activity under, that is exempted from your permit and solicitation ordinance because free speech type activities, you can't require a permit for those. So religious-type speech would be an example.
Okay.
So those are accepted. And so the ordinance can't capture all of it because of these free speech protections.
Okay.
If you'll permit me to look at the, your ordinance, I can answer that question.
Sure. Because these are just questions that come up whenever we have, you know, businesses and other groups come to neighborhoods. It does irritate a lot of the residents and especially neighborhoods that, you know, I hear all the time, you know, my, my child is sleeping or taking a nap, and they're being woken up again by another, somebody asking for money or for business and so forth. I just did, I wanted to be real specific about what our ordinance says about those type of activities on that thing, on that issue. I'm pretty sure, Flores Cale, you have the, the same thing maybe in your neighborhood where people get kind of frustrated, but then they also get very afraid, especially when they have children at home or teenagers, and they hear knocks on the door, and they have people that they have no idea. And they become sometimes very aggressive in themselves.
Correct.
I always open my door with my three dogs, barking at them, and I'm like, yeah, what do you need? So I've learned the best way to do it is say, I'm just going to sell my house, so I'm not interested. But it is, it's really awkward to have to tell somebody that. So I don't know if there's something that we can do about that, but...
Well, door-to-door sales have been going on for a long time in this country, so...
Look, and I get it, they have to work. But it's still a little bit, it's scary and nerve-wracking. Like, you know, if you have kids, they're like 14, 15, staying home alone, they don't always know not to answer the door, so...
I get it. I'm in agreement.
And while Paige is looking at it, I just want to go back to what we were talking about regarding, you said it's on top of page six, but it looks like that is applicable to begging and not so much camping.
Right, that's what I was, right, that's what I was saying. So maybe what you're talking about is somewhere else.
Yeah, so I think what she wants for, what they want is falls under Section 23.311, page three. And I, but I think it's covered when it says this section does not apply to campgrounds located on private property with the consent of the property owner. And I think what she was trying to say is she just would like to see private property without permission from the property owners it put in there. So it's, it's basically the same thing, but you're just saying it not. Maybe it means something different. I don't know if Paige wants to look at that. But you're specifying that even on private property without permission, you still can't do this.
I was going to ask if Chief Barnett has experienced anything like that.
And not just trespassing?
I do. Mayor and Council, for the record, Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police. Alarm companies and insurance companies are those that are exempted by state law from having to receive a permit to go door-to-door by the state of Texas. They're still violating the law if they go past your no, no trespassing or your no solicitor signs. Obviously, we try to give those a warning and just have them removed from the property and, and remove them from the community if we can. Specifically regarding your example, if someone is camping or begging or anything on someone's private property, if they refuse to depart, that would be criminal trespassing, and we have a state law that would be, that would be applicable at that point. So it's, it's well-covered in state law, and that's what we would use to enforce. Yes, ma'am?
But that's not the same as saying we now have a law and it's illegal to solicit. Right. So the, it sounds like very little from the solicitation standpoint, door-to-door is going to change with this. But it is still clear, at least what our position is, I suppose. We're, we're not expanding it. I guess there's something...
It's just for clarification of what we have right now in our ordinance is when it comes to that.
And again, kind of the idea here is, and I think they're, they just passed a law at the ledge, and it's going to the governor's desk. It's essentially this anyway. So it's just to protect ourselves. We don't currently have a problem with beggars, but in the event that the, that, that scenario might develop, we'll have the proactive law on the books so that we're not being retroactive. Because it's always harder to be retroactive, especially on something like this, where they think they're allowed to, and then we have to pass a law and move them. This will be clear from day one, ground zero. So, motions?
Just some more discussion real quick. Paige, will this exclude the city from soliciting businesses for events or HOAs?
I'm not sure about the HOA part. You, you have an ordinance that requires people that are going door-to-door to get permits with the exceptions of the chief, and thank you, chief, specified. There are, you've got permit requirements for mobile food vendors, those types of additional businesses, temporary food vendors that come through the city. Anybody that's trying to have an event within the city, if you've got a permitting process that applies there, that would apply. This does not, this ordinance does not address those types of activities.
Sounds good. Thank you. Making sure we're handcuffing ourselves. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're fine on all those things. Motions, commentary? Sorry, Councilwoman Bradshaw.
Thank you. I would just like to thank Councilmember, excuse me, Flores Cale, for bringing this forward, and Paige for helping, and staff and police department for helping to put this ordinance together. I would also like to thank you for coming here tonight and speaking in support of, I'm sorry, I did not catch your name, but I would like to just second everything that you said. I thought you, you worded everything very well, and, and I think this is important for our city. And also, addressing back to you, we need to move your mom to Kyle. Good. We need to find her a home. And I, I'm looking forward to voting for this. I, I'm excited that Kyle is going to have this added layer of protection.
Is that a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 24.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Bradshaw, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale, that we approve Agenda Item Number 24. It's written. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item Number 25. Is there any objection to finally passing number 24? Seeing none, it is finally passed. Next up, Agenda Item Number 25, resolution of the City of Kyle, Texas, accepting the petition for annexation of 24.563 acres, more or less. This is chance property, right? Go, Mr. Kuntz.
Mayor, my name is Howard Kuntz. I'm the Community Development Director, for the record. This is, like you stated earlier, a quest for nearly 25 acres to be voluntarily annexed. I'm going to share my screen so I can, so I can show you a vicinity map and give everybody an idea of what it is that I'm looking at. So this is the staff report that's in your packet this evening. Here's the location of the property. This is BB Road. This is the Lakeside Crossing Manufactured Home Park. This is Dacey. And over here is Science Hall Elementary School. And this is nearly the 25 acres. This is property that has historically been under a Chapter 43 non-annexation agreement to not be annexed. It's been a, been a hole and the otherwise donut of the city limits that are, that's surrounded on all sides. This is a request that's been brought forward by Nikal Mead, who is an attorney that is representing development interests associated with Lakeside Crossing Manufactured Home Park. And they have sought to develop, or I'm sorry, they have sought to annex into the city limits. Upon a successful annexation, if that is your will, the property will be applied, it'll have... the property will be applied. It'll have agricultural zoning assigned to it. And then from that point forward, they'll have the opportunity to seek a rezoning or the city could assign zoning on its own. But right now, the only question before you is whether or not to accept their voluntary petition for annexation. So.
Thank you, Howard. Any discussion on the motion?
I have a question. In the event they're annexed in, do we have to, are we, the city, is the city responsible for those roads? And is there wastewater already out there and water lines?
So the roads are already ours. BB is already ours, as is Dacey. And there are no roads internal to the site on the proposed 25 acres to be annexed. It's a, it's an abandoned home site and otherwise undeveloped.
So when you say undeveloped, you mean there's no roads and they'd have to be built?
Not inside the 25 acres. Now, there will be roads built at some point if the property is ever developed. And I can't tell you whether or not we will have to maintain them because I don't know yet whether or not they would be public or private.
And is there water lines out there? Are there water lines out there?
My understanding is yes, there are.
Am I correct in saying that we, did we previously vote on this for a rezone?
No.
Where is this relation to the manufactured zoning? I thought that's what this site was.
So the, previously, we had discussed the idea of adding the provision for M2 and M3 to be inserted into the comprehensive plan in the Newtown community. This is on the future land use map of the comprehensive.
So we didn't, we didn't rezone it. We amended the comp plan.
No zoning assigned, correct. It was a comprehensive plan text amendment.
All right. So this is, but this is a part of that series of votes. So they're amending the comp plan to create manufactured home. Now they're going through annexation. Then they're going to be coming for manufactured petition and then expanding their project.
It's quite likely.
Yeah. So. Anyway. I don't see reason not to annex them. So I motion to approve. It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approved agenda number 25. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries five to two. Next up, agenda item number 26, a resolution of the City of Kyle, Texas, accepting the petition for annexation of 120.458 acres more or less, setting schedule, et cetera. Mr. Coons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'm sharing my screen. On your screen is a copy of the staff report included in your packet tonight. As you stated, this is 120 acres, give or take, which we commonly refer to as the Rastagar property. This map shows, this is Bunton Creek over here where my cursor is. This is Hayden Reich. It runs down from Yuland. And this is the property. Over here is Bunton Creek Reserve, one of the newer subdivisions that's over that way east of the high school. So this is about 125, 120 acres of largely undeveloped property. I think there's a couple of, you know, agricultural type structures on there like barns or an old homestead. And they've come forward representing the, the LLC, I believe it's called Kyle 120 LLC. And they've come forward with a voluntary request for annexation.
I'd like to approve agenda item number 26.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilmember Floris Cale, seconded by Councilmember Tobias to approve agenda item number 26. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 27. Consider approval of an agreement with Gap Strategies an amount not to exceed $65,000 for the public relations services related to public education for a possible November bond election. Samantha Armbruster.
Good evening. Samantha Armbruster, Director of Communications. Earlier in the meeting, y'all had discussion about a geo road bond. And so the services would allow a consultant to come in at Gap Strategies to help with public education. You have information about the proposal in your backup material and Cara with Gap Strategies is also on the line to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions on this particular item? I know the context is they were a part of the applications for the PR firms to be interviewed for the Public Safety Center at that time. We went with Bowie, but there was a definite support for Gap as well in that, in that meeting. And so given the context of the way Bowie successfully helped us with the Public Safety Center, this might be a better fit, however, for Gap Strategies, which is the thinking. And so we can get them right to work if we so choose. There's obviously a long runway for this, but because we're going all the way up till November. But the thought might be that the earlier we can get them started, the better time they have to, to help us in the crafting of the messaging while we're going through right now and having conversations about tax rate impact and various messages that we're trying to send. So those are all just kind of general thoughts. Anybody have any other thoughts or questions or comments?
I just have one thing.
Councilor Tosh.
Do we know right off the bat if there's going to be any kind of different way of messaging like we did with Bowie versus them? Is there anything already in the works that you know of?
We did have an interview with them recently to go over the timeline and the scope and expectations. Luckily, that we will have more options available to us for public education because we won't be in the middle of a pandemic where we were so limited last time. So we do see the opportunity for a lot of engagement that we didn't have this last year. And starting, if, if it were to be approved, starting now would allow us that time to talk through with input from, from the council on what we've learned in 2020 and how we can use what we've learned into 2021 outreach.
I just want to say, I think the timing is appropriate. One reason is that November will be here on us, upon us really quickly. And I know we've gotten a late start on this already. So everything we can do to move this process forward, to bring a, a bond with all the information necessary that the voters can make a great decision on, you know, with all the information in front of them would be helpful. So I think this is perfect timing.
Anyone else? I see Mr. Barton on the screen. How are you, Jeff? Ready to go? Everybody's really stoic, all of you, like very, very stoic right now.
Very enthused.
I, it was a serious, very deep question. I understand the thinking there. So are you, are you with us now, Jeff? You're muted.
This is, this is Cara. I don't know if y'all can hear me.
Yeah.
And I couldn't hear your question because y'all's video froze.
Yeah, it's sorry. We glitched right there. So we're just, just generally asking if y'all are ready to go.
Oh, we are.
Okay.
Yes, we are.
Did we just?
I'll just elaborate, Mayor, by saying we've, we've actually had a lot of experience during the pandemic and also doing just this exact kind of project bond. Bond, education for communities all over the state from Dallas to central Texas. So it'd be nice to do one right here in our backyard. Love to be involved in it if that's the decision you'll make.
Is there, is there a possibility of you being involved in another bond project for municipalities here in Hayes County over the same time period?
We are. We're, we're, we're actually right now working on public education for the city of Buta on their.
So if we put a provision that, you know, where it's sort of a guarantee, we could call it carrot stick for having a higher percentage than our neighbors to the north, is, that's okay to you?
The, the city manager's already said he's going to run over me with his truck in downtown if we don't do as well or better than you. So.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
All right. It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. I don't think the, the city manager has a truck. It's more of a, it's more of a 72 passenger van kind of situation, but it might, it might feel like a truck. It depends on if it's loaded. It's a bus.
Got my keys to my truck room off. It's a great.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, agenda item number 28, discussion of possible action on classifications, pay and pay parity for telecommunications. Chief Barnett.
Thank you. Mayor, for the record, Jeff Barnett, chief of police. Mayor and council, thank you for letting us bring this item back for your attention. You may recall in our most recent budget workshop on a Saturday morning, we talked about a variety of budget needs for next year for the police department. One item that came up in discussion was perhaps a more urgent need to consider matching the pay parity for our telecommunications. Several years ago, quite several years ago, we embarked on a plan to co-locate our dispatch staff with the Hayes County Sheriff's Office and potentially Texas State. They've now moved in and even the city of San Marcos is temporarily housed in this facility. So all of your 911 operators here in Hayes County are operating out of the new communications center that's built in San Marcos. We had, for a long time, had discussions to achieve pay parity so that our dispatch staff would be earning the same pay wage as their partners from their other agencies seated just a few feet away. And we've been working towards that as a city. We discussed that at the budget workshop and we realized that we needed to get you more specific information and discuss the urgency at a council meeting because that was just for discussion only and not for action. You had three documents in your backup material. And I need to highlight that the author of, of the memo that I thought was very well written and had a lot of detail was from our communications manager, Chrissy Milliken. She's here in the background with part of her team from our dispatch center. I have to take just a second to tell you how professional our team is. We have an excellent 911 dispatch system here in the city of Kyle. And our telecommunications are second to none. They are outstanding at their job and we're very proud of the work that they do. As we move forward on the discussion of pay, you probably had a chance to read her memo that outlined the urgency and the need to achieve pay parity. You also saw some numbers that talked about our staffing attempts. We currently have a handful of vacancies and that's kind of been the trend for the last couple of years. It doesn't mean that we haven't been in a hiring process. It's that the job is very difficult and challenging. She highlighted in her memo that we had one, out of 177 of the most recent applications, that only 13 of those applicants were able to meet all of the stringent requirements for the job. Out of those 13, only three were able to complete the training program. That shows you what a stressful job and what a high level of skill and attention it takes to be able to do their job. As she identified in her memo as well, we identified key, three key areas that we're trying to achieve with the, the pay parity discussion that we'll, we'll move to. And that's number one, to reduce turnover, to improve recruitment and to enhance morale. She also talked about some of our dispatch staff that have applied at some of their partner agencies in the same room so that they could earn a higher pay wage to do basically the same job.
So Chief, can I jump in right on that point?
Absolutely.
Why, why is it that we are a part of a co-located program where all of our telecommunications are in the same room next to each other, agreed upon in a big contract and not having some kind of consideration for having equal wages for the job, the exact same job in the same room next to each other? So if one group is raising, you can hop seats and the, the wages are up or you're penalized and the wages are down. Why, why is it that the, that the pay system is not set such that that jumping seats is not and you're not incentivized to do that?
Right. That, that's a very good question.
We all pay into the program.
Correct. So we pay, we pay and we hire and we retain our own staff. So our staff works for us. They're not paid by a conglomeration. They're paid like every other city of Kyle employee, straight from our general funds. Much like the Hayes County dispatchers are paid from the Hayes County funds, Texas State paid independently. Those employees all still are employed by their retaining agency and therefore fall under their retirement and their pay systems. We, over the years, did discuss with the various entities that were considering moving into the facility to achieve pay parity, and we had hoped to do so before we moved in. The, the answer to that is it was somewhat of a moving target. The opening date was delayed and delayed. And then the county, in an effort to try to retain and, and hire more dispatchers for their own services, opted to give a pay raise so that they could fill a number of vacancies. I think at one time they were in the double digits. And I think they had to act quickly in order to be able to continue 911 services for the entire county. So they moved forward with a pay raise. We were unable to do that in the most, our current budget in our most recent budget process. Now that we've moved in, we moved in in November of 2020, so just about six months, seven, eight months ago. We are seeing the, a detriment of not having pay parity. And that's kind of when we're coming to you mid-year. Normally, we would wait until the budget process, like we spoke about it a few, a few weeks ago. But we're seeing some attrition leave our agency to go to some of our partners that are paying more. And we, we felt the need to bring it to you sooner as you saw outlined in manager Milliken's email or her memo. On one of the other pages, I'll just briefly cover it. You see it was entitled HCSO Communications Division Pay Scale. That kind of gives you an outline about their pay system. They've gone to a pay system that's very similar to police officers. If you recall in our meeting confer agreement, we have basically a pay scale for our sworn staff at the PD. The county has the same thing for their sworn staff. And now they've implemented a very similar plan for their dispatchers. So their dispatcher can see their step plan basically over the next several of years. And that show, that increases longevity. When a new dispatcher starts and they see where their pay can be in year two, year five, year seven, that, that helps in retention. We want to do something very similar. Right now, we're trying to, to do a stopgap measure. And in the budget process, we'll be bringing you a matching pay scale system to consider so that our dispatchers can do the same that a county dispatcher can do. They can see what their pay will be in year two, three and four if they, if they were to stay with the agency. We currently are, are given merit raises. So there's some uncertainty for our staff. And we're trying to create a pay scale, a very similar to our sworn, so that way they can depend on the money.
Okay. I think I have three, three questions. So the first one is you, as you related to the budget. So if we make an amendment to pay parity now ahead of the budget, how is that going to be reflected? Is this essentially, we're getting a jumpstart, but it's going to be included in the overall increases? Because there's a lot of ask for the police department, which we understand, obviously, but is it, is this, I, I want to make sure that this is captured as we're going through our budgeting process. If we go ahead and carve this out, that, but it's still reflected, if that makes sense.
It would be, sir. If we can look on the page that, then the third page, the one that's entitled proposed pay increase to achieve pay parity. You will see we broke it down by position, by their, I'm going to call it rank, their title and assignment. And then by their years of service so that we could match the county proportionally. You will see in the top section there that says June through October, and that basically means today through the last day of September. So our current budget year, we would not require any additional funding. We have the money in our current budget to sustain the pay increases that are proposed here in front of you.
And it's $60,000 for next year?
Uh, let's see. It is a total cost of $146,000. But then we will have some savings. We were able to terminate a radio contract because of our co-location with the county. We could propose if the county, I mean, I'm sorry, if the council so desired to eliminate one full-time equivalent position for next year. I say that because we've had a running number of vacancies and it's, it's, it's likely that we will have one vacancy throughout the year at any given point. And what we would propose, if necessary, and this would kind of be like a, a saving measure, not necessarily our first option, but a saving measure, would be to eliminate one full-time telecommunications position for that one year, realizing that we would bring it back. That gives us a savings of $56,000 plus the radio savings. And in all we need for next year's budget, the increase would be right at $60,000.
Right. Well, it looks like we have plenty of options going into the budget. What we're just contemplating here, if council's open to it, is taking that first step and then we can decide about the FTE through the budgeting process.
That would be great. And we would need no additional funding to be able to make that happen.
That was essentially my second question would be that, the budgetary impact. And then my third question is for Christina, if you can come forward. I'm about to, I'm going to put you on the hot seat. Real quick. I promise it's not bad.
Yeah, she's, she was going to speak tonight a little bit too, but she has lost her voice a little bit.
All right. You've been with us a while. I want to go back to 2016. We were told as a city council that the reason we wanted to pursue co-location is because whenever a 911 call comes to the city of Kyle, our police dispatch takes the phone call, dispatches the police, takes information, then transfers to the county for EMS and for fire. That's correct, right? That's what happened?
Correct.
At, at that time, what we were told was if we went to co-location, there is a sort of a software component upgrade that we were working on, but there's also going to be a savings because there'd be one place for a phone call to go into. And then this dispatching could happen simultaneously and it would save time for EMS and for fire because they'd all get dispatched at the same time. But I went and toured the, the Public Safety Center the other day and noticed that it seemed to me that basically the mechanics of the phone call coming into police dispatch, they'd still dispatch out police and transfer, but instead of it being from Kyle to San Marcos, it's just across the, the, you know, to into the next set of dispatchers. And then they do the exact same thing so that the mechanics of the way a call comes in and is. So that the mechanics of the way a call comes in and is dispatched has not changed from before to after. Is that right?
Not entirely. The original proposal was also based off the CIS software.
Right.
Whenever we adopted the Tyler software and moved towards that, which we have not been live for that long, and that's since August, we're implementing ways that the technology does a lot of that work and takes a lot of that to streamline those services and those systems. The process of going through to having the, one of the models that was brought up where you have, what some people refer to as a bank of call takers, where that group gets all the calls and they get dipped out, and that's one way to do things. In order to do that, that really has to go over a phase plan, and everyone has to be staffed adequately enough to achieve that. So we're not there yet to move that way. So so far, I would say phase one with being in the co-locate is allowing that technology purchased with Tyler Systems to kind of fill in some of those gaps and streamline the processes so that when we, as Kyle, enter a call, the other agencies on that software instantly see that before we pick up a phone and call, before we yell across the room, hey, can you send that? And then also, the WestNet program was approved by commissioners to implement in the system so that fire and EMS can be essentially paged automatically when the calls hit the screen.
Is there anything about the, the location or the co-location that makes that happen? Or could we have basically a similar efficiency if our, if we had a, if we were still dispatching out of the city of Kyle with all this new technology?
There may be separate pieces that have to be purchased to make it flow in the same way. But yes, should be able to, what we're doing today should be able to be achieved in a different location through the technology pieces.
You think that if we, if we weren't co-locating, what I'm hearing you saying is that we could still achieve the same efficiency of call response?
That we are providing today, yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for you. Thank you. Hey, Chief. Anybody have any questions for Chief? Comments? Counselor Rizzo.
Yeah, Chief, I just wanted to know, so what we're having right now, an issue is with seat jumping in a way, right? We're going from one seat to another agency?
One component, yes, sir.
Yeah, so I was wondering why there wasn't anything implemented early on to address that so that wouldn't happen with all the different entities there. I figured, you know, the different entities would come together and say, hey, you know what? This Kyle's training their people. They don't want to train them and lose them. So what can we do to rectify people, you know, wanting to jump seats? I just figured something like that would have been implemented early on to, you know, help, you know, stop what's going on right now, you know?
Yes, yes, sir. So the city of Kyle has been kind of a work in progress in trying to achieve that pay parity. We've taken some steps, but they've never quite been enough to keep up with the pace that the county's utilized for their pay system. They've just kind of always been that one step ahead of us. Even at that time, they were ahead of us, and every time they, every time we bump up, they bump up a little bit more too. So they're trying to attract a lot of candidates as well. I can tell you now that we've engaged in a very good, meaningful conversation with Hayes County and county elected officials, as well as the Sheriff's Department personnel, and they are sharing with us their plans as they move forward throughout their budget process. I will tell you that they are planning to ask for a small bump in pay above what you're seeing here, but there's nothing set in stone. Obviously, it's still at the staff level at the county, and so there's nothing approved. This is a big step forward in getting us to where we need to be, like the agreement that you're talking about. The county has notified, or has agreed to keep us completely apprised of their pay system. They are looking at some things such as certificate pay, maybe shift differential, some other things that we typically call soft pay. It's in addition to your hourly rate. And we've got a list of those, and when we have our next budget meeting with you, we plan to bring those up for discussion and share with you the latest from the county as well. At least this gets us to their pay scale, and then we'll be ready to talk again in a couple of weeks about what they, what they, the county intends to do in the future for your consideration.
It just, it just seems like having this co-op location is, is going to continue to arise this, this problem for us continuously because as they move forward, we have to move forward, you know? So it's, I just don't see the ceiling, hitting the ceiling anytime soon. I, I know how important our dispatchers are. Trust me, I know how important they are, and I want to be fair with them as well, but we can't be competing with another entity, especially an entity that probably has a bigger budget than ours. It, it's hard to compete with that, but it just feels like there should be something implemented that doesn't allow this to happen.
So we did approach the discussion of having agreements in place and sharing of information, and obviously, they wouldn't, they wouldn't agree to anything in writing. They're not going to say that they're not going to give pay raises to their employees at this point. Obviously, they have a number of vacancies that they're trying to fill, so they're trying to be very competitive in the market. The dispatch centers across the state of Texas are obviously undergoing what we're going through about recruiting good, qualified candidates. So they're all looking at different options in a way to recruit and retain their staff. This pay scale puts us in the, in the ballpark. I mean, it puts us right there with the county for right now, and who knows what they will or won't do in the next budget, but we'll give you that information when we get it. We identified three areas that are, that we're trying to make improvements on in our dispatch center when we talked to our staff that were considering jumping that seat. There were three benefits that the county had, and I think I may have mentioned this at our Saturday workshop. Number one was the pay. Number two was the ability to interact with their police officers. The dispatchers are very concerned and very aware of the dangers that are out there for the police officers and code enforcement and officers and such that are working out in the field. And there's a sense of ownership and pride in that teamwork. And with them being located in San Marcos, we've realized that there's some distance there, distance in the friendships and the working relationships. So we're trying to combat that. We're asking our officers to go by the dispatch center and keep up that camaraderie at work when they can. Obviously, we want our officers in the community, but when they either go to the jail or when they go to the courthouse, if they can swing by and check in with their dispatchers, it goes a long way in improving the morale and working relationships. So that was the second thing. The third thing was the Sheriff's Office has a supervisor on duty at all times. So we currently are staffed with a manager, a supervisor, and two leads. At the county, they have more leads that are on duty 24/7, and our staff that was considering leaving or that, that were looking at other options, said that they looked forward to having a supervisor on duty so that they could get their questions answered, their problems resolved. So that may be something that you hear us discuss in the upcoming budget workshops too, but that'll be something for next year. We think this is a really good step forward, and we think it's more critical and urgent now for us to bring it to you almost mid-year.
Thank you, Chief. You know, 911 is very important to us, and it's, it's probably the most important part of public safety. I know the officers that patrol the streets are too, but somebody has to get them, they're dispatched, and that's the first voice that somebody hears on the line, so.
Yeah, they're our lifeline too, so they're very important to us.
Definitely. So, yeah, retaining them is, is very important to me. So thank you.
Counselor Bradshaw.
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing this forward to us at the budget workshop. I honestly had no idea that this was an issue, and this was an ongoing struggle that you were having with the, with the dispatchers. You know, our dispatchers are amazing. Thank you, ladies, for sitting here through this entire meeting. I know that they can be a little bit dry and dull sometimes, so thank you for waiting until the end with us and sticking it out. And thank you for not seat jumping. We appreciate you for being here and staying here and being a part of Team Kyle. And I don't want to make another motion. I do think this is something that needs to be addressed in the very near future and then further discussed for the budget, the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Perfect.
Counselor Tobias.
Being in law enforcement in, in the Corrections Bureau, I understand exactly where all of y'all are coming from. I know how it feels to be in a different area or a different building, and then you have your agency come in. It just brings that sense of team bonding of what's going on and camaraderie that you have. And you hit some good points about, you know, possibly getting a pop scale, peace officer pay scale, and then adding the telecommunications, maybe looking at adding it in there. So these are very important items to bring up and to let you know that we appreciate everything that our tele, our telecommunications people do, and I truly understand. And it's something that if you can bring something to the table at the budget season, we can be able to look at. Hopefully, we'll be able to help you out on that end right there.
Counselor Floris Kael.
Thank you. Well, I know for a fact that we have $175,000 extra dollars in our general fund, so.
That's true. That's true.
I'm not too sure.
375, actually.
370, but we've already voted on 200. So I.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We just created that.
Originally, it was coming out, and then Mr. Ellison found a good compromise, but that money didn't go away. In fact, yeah, now it's a whole amount, yeah.
I'm agreeing with you.
Excellent. We have them covered for two years at least, right? Two years. And I'm going to say, it is an embarrassment to know that you guys sit next to somebody making more money than you because now more than over, it's important to, to, I mean, everybody struggles money-wise, and I want to commend you guys for staying, and it really truly does mean a lot that you guys haven't left us. Because if I were in your shoes, I couldn't say that I would stay. So something is to be said about your loyalty. And I know, I myself, and I think Councilmember Bradshaw had thought about going up to visit you guys, and we just got to make it a priority to do it. Because the truth is, is I would.
A lot easier to visit if they're in Kyle.
That, I was going to say, I would love to be self-sufficient enough as a city to have you guys near us, to, to come by and to be able to see you guys. And I go by the police department all the time, and not just because I'm arrested, but because I like to visit. But I mean, I, I love having that relationship with our employees, and it really does sadden me to know that you guys are over there and you don't have that same support. It's not the same. It's not the same. And so my goal is to bring you guys closer. That's my goal. I'm not going to say it's going to happen, but it's my goal. And you guys are so very important to us and to our officers and to the whole city. And I don't want to, again, turn out like surrounding cities who lack police officers and dispatchers and have a 16-minute wait time. We're better than that. And then Kyle's big. It's, it's, I think, just a couple miles, square miles smaller than San Marcos. So please hang in there with us. You have my vote. This for me is a no-brainer. This for me is no brainer because the only, I have two big, important issues that I'd like to see the city deal with, and that's public works and public safety. Everything else is a luxury, and then I love my parks and rec just the same, but if you don't feel safe, and if you don't have the tools that you need to have a good infrastructure, then your city really isn't, isn't doing its job. So to you guys, I say, thank you, and I don't see why not.
Is that a motion?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 28.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Floris Kael, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approve Agenda Item Number 28. Is there any further discussion on the motion? I just, I guess the point that I was making, and which I agree with what Councilmember Rizzo said, wholeheartedly, and it's just, it seems like there's a competitive advantage that the county has sort of put, put themselves into, and your commentary about, you know, not putting anything into writing and it's still at the staff level and those kind of things just, just are challenging to me. So if we're going to compete, if they want to have, if they want to compete, then, then we'll compete, I suppose. But I'm, I'm kind of a all-in or nothing. Either we're working together in a way that's fair, considering all parties are not, and so if we're, that's just my opinion on it.
I think he's going to double your pay.
No, I certainly, I certainly don't want to lose one dispatcher to the county. That's what I don't want to lose, not one. So that's the point. Any further discussion?